To order, this is the 12th day of November 2024, also known as my 46th wedding anniversary. Thank you. The congratulations or condolences out to my wife. I declare that we have a quorum, which is 50 in this town. The warrant has been properly served and returned to the town clerk's office. I can hear a lot of reverberation. I hope yours is not bothersome. Please stand now as we address the flag and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I want to give big thank yous to all the volunteers, whether they're appointed or elected, who worked tirelessly for this wonderful town. A special shout out today to Kathy Herrick and the registrars, the voters, the poll workers that worked so hard during last week's election. I want you to take a look at page four in your warrant. At some point in time today or tomorrow, next week, there's a listing of all the many opportunities that are available in town to volunteer. If you'd like to be involved in one of these committees, meet all the great folks that are here involved. There are talent bank forms that are available on the town webpage. They're available at the town manager's office. Just reach out to somebody who's already on one of those committees and we will welcome you. I also want to introduce you to Carter Terranzini, sitting all the way over here with a full head of hair like me. He's our interim town manager. He's been steering this ship effortlessly, I think, and doing an absolutely wonderful job, and I want a big round of applause to Carter. This time, I want to go over the electronic voting to make sure that everybody's got a clicker by now, which is what I'll refer to it as. The purpose here is to accurately reflect the vote for today. There are many reasons people don't want to show their hand and publicly show their support or opposition for a particular article, and they feel more comfortable voting privately. So we hope it'll also save time when we had to do hand counts. So once the debate has started, I will declare it's now time to vote. You have to give it a moment for her to get it up on the computer. Voting is then open, is what I'll say. And then you use your clicker in favor or opposed. You all vote at the same time. You don't have to wait for the yays and then wait for the nays. You all vote at the same time. But don't begin until I say to begin, because otherwise you'll have gone too quickly. Your clicker will display an A for yay, a B for an A, or of course, if you want to abstain, just don't vote. The lit display will tell you that your vote was sent, received, and counted. If you hit the wrong button, just wait a moment and then hit the right one before the voting is closed, and it will change your vote. And then we'll show you the results on the screen. You do not need to point it at the device. There's no line of sight requirement. The light on the clicker will show you that it worked. Be patient. When there's a lot of people and everybody clicks at the same moment, the system kind of jams the signals a little bit. Just wait a moment, 10 seconds or whatever, and then hit it again and see if it goes through the second time, okay? You have to be present in the room to vote. You must return your clicker in the afternoon. Evening is over. So we've got a question we're going to start with and see how well your clickers are working. Ready with the first question?
Do they want to check their numbers or just a question?
Usually you check to make sure they're working.
Okay. Well, we know that it's working if we answer the question. Oh, so I'm number three? Okay, so I just click now in number three?
And that should light up. There you go.
There you go, okay. So you can see the number on the back. I don't usually test them this way, but they'd like to, and that's cool, okay. But I still like to go through the first question so we can see that people get a signal on their clicker.
All right, so.
So here's your first question, submitted to us by the Historical Society, just to see how well you know Lunenburg. Did anyone who signed the Declaration of Independence ever live in Lunenburg? If you think somebody did, you'll get A for yes, and if you think that's wrong, you'll do number two for no. So voting is now open, correct? She's ready? Go ahead and vote. Now, as you're voting and as you're thinking about this question, I want you to know that if you had this beautiful red book, then you'd have the answers to all these questions about Lunenburg. These are available at the Historical Society. How much are they in?
$10.
$10! How about that? And they are writing a new edition that's coming out fairly soon, so we've got a special on these right now. All right, can we see the votes? 204 people have voted. What are the results? How many say yes? How many say no? We don't know yet.
It just says no.
It just says no? The majority is no?
Majority was no.
Majority is no, but you don't have numbers? You don't have a tally?
No.
Hold on. Not for this question. She didn't tally it that way. Okay, now, is Bill Tyler here? No, Bill? Okay, so I'll give you the answer. Does anybody know the answer? Anybody want to shout out the answer?
Michael Chapdolane.
Not Michael Chapdolane.
Dan Nelson.
Robert Treat Payne was a signer of the Declaration of Independence and lived in Lunenburg. At some point, at some point in time, he lived in Lunenburg. Okay. Want to do the other question? Could you do it? Yep. We have another question for you. Now, you should be checking your clickers. This is not just a history lesson. Check the clickers to make sure you're getting a signal that's telling you that it responded. What birthday is Lunenburg preparing to celebrate? I know some people know this answer. Voting is now open. One is 250, two is 300. Everybody got a chance to vote? Okay, voting is now over. Let's see what people think. How many people think it's 250? How many people think it's 300? You don't have tallies. You know, when we get to the next question, we're going to need tallies. It's okay. More people think it's 300. Lincoln, you're pleased to know that. It's going to be 300 in a couple of years. 1728 was when Lunenburg was first incorporated. And again, if you knew the book for $10, you'd have the answers. All right, I digress. The next thing we're going to go over very briefly, I think, because we got such a late start, are the ground rules for civil debate. Okay. You may stand, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I'm trying to find out if my clicker's working. I see only an A on the screen.
Okay. When you see an A on the screen, that tells me you voted yes, and if you see a B on the screen, it tells me you voted no. Okay? So now I know, now it's no longer anonymous. Sorry, now we know how you voted. Mine says A and B. Okay. You can't share the clickers. You can't take it out of the room. While you're going out of the room, give it to your neighbor and tell your neighbor how to vote for it. That came up in the Maytown meeting, kind of embarrassing. Okay, so the ground rules for civil debate. No noise makers, no cell phones, no hooting and hollering, which are inappropriate for a civil debate. You line up at the microphones, state your name, your street address, and try to get to everybody who's in line. I'm going to ask the select board, the finance committee, sometimes out of order. If you've got a physical limitation, somebody can help you and get the microphone over to you. If you have a point of order, like you did, sir, okay? If you have a point of order, which is a serious question about procedure or the legalities of something, then stand and say point of order. Don't just start shouting out your point of order, because I can't concentrate with several people talking to me at the same time. You'd say point of order and stand. I'll call on you, and then you'll tell me what the issue is. If you have an amendment to any article that's before you, any questions, the amendments have to be in writing, and there are forms that are right at the bottom of each microphone. The moving party will speak first and be given adequate time to present their article. Speaking thereafter, everybody should try to be brief, except for me, and anyone after the moving party should be extra brief if they're allowed to speak a second time, and I may ask you to step out of line so that somebody who's not had a chance to speak would be allowed to speak. Moving the question or cutting off debate must be at the microphone. It must be seconded. It's not debatable. Two-thirds vote cuts off debate at that point in time. But I will rule it out of order if I feel there's still a lot of people that are wishing to speak on a particular article. Or, as happened last year, if there's somebody I already promised them they'd have the last word, and then there's a move to question, I'm going to allow somebody that I promised to have the last word to have the last word. So we conduct our business according to Mass. General Law, as you would expect, and we conduct our business according to Town Meeting Time. It's a book that's been around for way too long, but it's being rewritten sometime next year. Town Council tells me, we'll see. So we're now ready to begin the meat of the matter. We're ready to begin the first article, and the first article, I believe, is Article One, and that's Mr. Nizulo.
Can you all hear me? Yep. I move to raise and appropriate the additional sum of $125,000 in no sense as follows: to line 13A, salary reserve, the sum of $17,500, and to line 6, group health insurance, the sum of $107,500, for a total increase of $125,000 and the amount raised and appropriated under Article 7 of the May 4, 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board, what's your recommendation?
Select Board recommended approval.
Okay, when you defer, and we don't know your recommendation, we're going to listen to the discussion. At the end of the discussion, I'm going to ask you to have a vote publicly and do a roll call at the end so that everybody knows how the finance committee feels about the article. So any questions, issues with Article One you want to address? You may come to the microphone to speak if you have a question, like this gentleman coming down now.
John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. It says here, Select Board recommended deferred. Could Select Board please explain? It's printed deferred. When was that changed?
Yeah, so we voted at our last meeting, and these were printed before that.
Thank you very much.
Very good. That brings up a point, because there are times in the warrant where it says that something was a no by one of these boards, but they actually, somebody was abstaining, not voting no. So just listen to what the recommendations are when each one of the boards tells you the recommendation. Okay, Finance Committee, you now need to discuss it openly and publicly, and then conduct a roll call vote, okay? You got to do it at the microphones loud enough so that people can hear their finance committee discussing this issue. There you go, there you go. I, okay, I recommend we approve Article One.
Second.
Okay, take a roll call vote. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Finance Committee recommends approval. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on Article One. Take out your clickers. This is a two-thirds vote required, so voting is now ready? It is ready, you can begin voting now. Yes, if you want to approve the article; no, if you don't want to. And if you don't want to vote, you want to abstain, just don't do anything. So there were little, about 200 and something, the people in the room. Maybe not everybody cares to vote or not on it. I think voting will now be closed, and did the article, the article passes, 185 to 16, and I will declare that's more than two-thirds. I so declare it, the article is passed. Article Two, Mr. Jeffries.
I move to raise and appropriate the additional sum of $31,882 in no sense to line number That's kind of crazy. For the FY '25 operating budget of the School Department, for a total increase of $31,882 in the amount raised and appropriated under Article 7 of the May 4, 2024 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board, what's your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval.
Finance Committee.
Recommend approval.
Okay. Anybody want to address Article Two? Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll declare that we're ready to vote. So is voting now open? It is now open. If you're in favor of Article Two, say yes. If you're opposed, say no. Two-thirds required. It'll be a short meeting, but wait to get started took longer than the meeting. We'll say, I know, I know. Been at this too long. Okay, that looks like about everybody. Voting is now closed. Did the article pass or fail? 180 in favor, 25 opposed, more than two-thirds. I so declare it, the article passes. Excellent. Article Three, please, Ms. Moore.
I move to A, authorize the payment of a so-called late bill from FY '24; B, appropriate the sum of $4,180 in no sense to pay said late bill; and C, meet said appropriation by a transfer from the overlay surplus account.
Okay, so there's a second. Select Board, your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Anyone want to step up to the microphone and tell us about anything, any questions about this article? Seems straightforward. Okay, this requires nine tenths, because it's a special meeting, and that's what's required. All right, we ready? We are. Signal by saying yes if you approve, no if you do not. And like, we'll have to do some fancy math with nine tenths. Oh, it says passes. Oh, I see. My computer's wonderful, it'll just tell me if this guy, this is open, and it's going to tell me if it passes or fails. Idiot proof. Even for me. I know, I hear you laughing. Okay, looks to be about the 200 we've been seeing. Okay, voting is now closed. Let's see how Article Three did. 190 against eight, and up there it says passed. So that article was passed. Thank you very much. On to Article Four, Mr. Alonso.
I move to appropriate the sum of $20,000 in no sense to support Lunenburg MART Connect Transportation Program as provided on our behalf by the Massachusetts Area Regional Transportation MART Organization and administered by the Council on Aging and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from the overlay surplus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board?
Recommend approval.
Finance?
Recommend approval.
Okay. This requires a two-thirds vote. Anybody have questions they want to ask about the MART Connection Transportation Program? Council of Aging Director is up there somewhere. She wants to ask her a question. She's going to be retiring in about a month, so Dora, you're losing her. Yes?
Ron Delicia, 181 Roswell Road. This just sounds an awful lot to me like public transportation, like we were given this grant in order to eventually take over, paying for public transportation open to anyone. I have no problem whatsoever subsidizing rides for seniors, but I think it's a mistake to open it to any user for any purpose. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Article Four? Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll declare we're ready to vote. This takes two-thirds as well. Voting is now open. Vote aye. Yes, if you want to approve the article; no, if you don't. We gained a couple people. All right. Still voting. All right, voting is now closed. And what are the results? 183 in favor, 31 against. Result, passed. Very good. Article Five, prudent investment rule, Ms. Emke.
I move to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, C, and D, to allow the town's trust funds to be invested in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 203C, which is the so-called prudent investment rule.
Is there a second? Select Board, your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval, four to one.
And Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval, four, one abstained.
One abstained, okay. Anyone want to discuss or debate or ask questions about Article Five, comment on Article You know you should sit closer, Mr. Bowen.
I always say that to me all the time. I see everything from up ahead.
I know. I tell it to you every time, but you don't change.
I get a better view of everybody.
Better view, okay.
So, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street, and I just wanted to, I did speak with Ezekiel, and I think Ezekiel told you that I would bring this up at town meeting, and I'd like you to follow up on that to our conversation that we had. When I spoke with Ezekiel with regard to this trust fund, I said, if you take all the trust funds, some of the trust funds cannot pay back the money. They don't make enough money, like the Parks Department makes enough money to pay back because they have additional money, but you have something like the Cemetery Commission that doesn't make money, okay, but costs money, that will be put into this fund, and if they borrow money from this fund and try to pay this fund back, what will happen is is that if they don't pay it back, the town, the town, the town account will pay for it, plus a penalty in the amount of time of which it needs to be done. Ezekiel, could you clarify that with the conversation that we had with regard to that situation? That I only use the Cemetery Commission as a fund that does not get any kind of operating money. Parks Department gets operating money. There are some other trust funds, like Conservation and stuff. They make money, they get money, you know what I mean, separate, to be able to pay bills. But we have trust accounts that don't pay bills, and I'd like to, I'd like Ezekiel, if you could just explain that a little bit more to our conversation that we had.
Yes, so, can you hear me?
Yeah, you got to turn the mic on, I don't know.
Hello?
Mr. Ayala, is this your first town meeting?
Second.
Second, okay. I just want everybody to know who you are. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Go right ahead.
So, yes, Mr. Bowen, we had a conversation. This particular rule is, is it in regards to borrowing funds? It's, it's changing our current investment policy. So it's a current investment policy for our trust funds, Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Funds, currently under Master and All, Chapter 44, which allows for 20 safe stocks. So this will allow, this rule would allow us to invest under Master and All, 203C, which is currently our OPEP trust funds are invested in this manner, and essentially diversifies our portfolio, which could in turn increase our investment on the funds.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not disagreeing that the fund is important. I think it is important, but I think that there needs to be an amendment to the fund that no fund that is put in there should be allowed to borrow from that account, except for they're showing a clear ability to be able to pay that money back, because if they take money from that, we will pay a penalty, and then we will also be on the hook to pay the bill out of tax money. It won't be out of the interest from the fund, because you won't be able to use that interest to pay that bill. We'll have to pay that out of tax money, and in the current climate, that could result in people borrowing money, people taking money from that trust fund, not being able to pay it back, increasing additional costs, and everybody in here knows we're having another override next year, because we have a governor who is bucking the system, and that means we're going to lose more state funding and money, and that's going to be a problem. And this is why I'm just trying to make clear that I think that we need an amendment to this, that we amended that no organization outside of your purview, okay, that they can pay back the money or they cannot borrow from the account, and I'd like to make an amendment to that. Does that sound reasonable?
I just want to make it clear as well.
Mr. Ayala, hold on a minute.
I did.
Mr. Ayala, hold on a minute.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay. You got, the forms are there at the microphone. You've been here before. Pick up a form, okay, write out your amendment, read it to us, okay, and then we'll let Mr. Ayala continue his thoughts. Is it all written out?
Well, first, what I want to do is I would just want to clarify with Ezekiel whether or not, you know, this is a reasonable option, okay, for protection of the money of which he oversees as financial director.
Okay, so you wanted to get some more clarification. Go ahead, Mr. Ayala.
Under Master and All, you cannot borrow money under the trust funds, but if you want to add the amendment, I'm in support as well, to add the additional language, you cannot borrow money under the trust funds anyway, they're a particular purpose. So you cannot borrow from those funds. They have to be used as a line.
So what gets used with the money that's generated from the fund? What do you do with that money?
What was that?
The money that gets generated from the investment fund that you get, what do you do with it? Where does it go? Do you distribute it and have control of that? Or do different, do different committees and different groups have use of that money and can petition it even though they can't pay it back?
No, if they, any, any interest generated on those trust funds goes back into the same bucket to those, particularly trust funds, to be used for the same purpose.
Okay, great.
Sir? Mr. Bowen's understanding of how this is working is not correct. They're not borrowing money out of these funds. As Ezekiel already stated, the money is there for those individual buckets. All this will do is change how the town is allowed to invest the money so that the money that they're investing can get a higher rate. This is going to be free money. We could be making this money already. We are leaving it on the table by not adopting an investor, a prudent investor rule. In addition to that, not all of the funds will be eligible. There are certain funds that are extra sensitive that are not eligible for this change. So the idea that we're somehow borrowing against this is not correct. If he amends the proposal, it will have no effect, because as Ezekiel already stated, these aren't funds in the typical way that we think of them. So I urge that no amendment be proposed, and that we vote on this as proposed, and I urge people to vote yes. I'd also like to know who abstained on each of the boards? Who voted no and who abstained?
I don't think you have a right to ask who specifically asked at the public meeting.
But didn't they take the vote in public?
It was a public meeting.
So I want to know. If they took the vote in public, I want to know, and I have a right to know. I could file a right to no request, and we could charge the town money, or you could tell me now.
Relax, relax, okay. Somebody want to say who voted no?
Yeah, I was, on the Select Board, I was the no vote to this.
Okay. It says abstain, but you said no.
No, that's the Finance Committee.
Okay, okay, sorry. Who on the Finance Committee voted no, or abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Good. Okay. Sir?
Mike Clark, 275 Cross Road. I'm also Cemetery Commissioner. Perhaps I would clear things up if you say the specific funds. The Cemetery Commission, we have a sale lots fund, 8115. That money from the sale of lots goes into that fund as a town fund that has to be allocated at town meeting to a capital, through a capital article. Then we have Cemetery Perpetual Care Trust Fund, 8001 for principal and another account for interest. So I assume you're talking these specific funds. They maintain their specific location in your system and along with parks and scholarship fund. This isn't a pooling. These are discreet funds that you just want to put into a little better rate of return, and then, you know, we, we follow Mass. General Law to request money back for our spending. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the prudent investment rule? Yeah? Okay, you might recognize the gentleman coming to the microphone. I think he's been here a couple of times. It's Mr. Passios. You also might know that Mr. Passios has moved on, not in that sense.
Some people might wish.
He asked if he could be a visitor and speak. I told him I would sponsor him, so go right ahead, Mr. Pass. Just tell us who you are for the record.
Yeah, Dave Passios, formerly of Whiting Street, Lunenburg, presently a resident of the state of New Hampshire. I just wanted to state that
I just wanted to state that, you know, as has been said a couple of times here in different ways, this article affects only trust funds. And the trust funds have very specific rules and regulations as to what can be done with that money. Most of them, the principal cannot be touched, cannot be borrowed against, it sits there and earns interest. And then there are regulations as to what the interest can be used for. So it's very clear cut, very controlled. It can never, these accounts cannot be borrowed against. There are other, there are other accounts that we covered when I was on the Finance Committee that need another look also, because we've been collecting less than 1% on all these thousands of dollars for a number of years now, when the interest rates were over 5%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on Article 5?
Follow up, I'm just going to remove my amendment. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Don't sit so far away, Bowen, you take enough time. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this article, prudent investments. We ready? You may signal by saying yes or no. Article 5 is before you. Start voting now. Okay, that seems to be everybody. Okay, voting is now closed, there's the results. Majority 208, three no, passes by more than the majority, and that article passes. Article 6 is now before you, that is Mr. Nizulo, please.
I move to accept Clause 17e and Clause 17f, both relative to the elderly, surviving spouses, or minor child of a deceased parent, and Clause 41d, relative to the elderly, of Section 5 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59.
Is there a second? Select Board, what's your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Recommend approval four yes, one abstained.
Okay. My notes say that somebody from the Board of Assessors is going to make a presentation. That would be you, sir. Step right up. Introduce yourself, tell us your role, and what do you have to say?
Hello, first of all, my name is John Rabbit, 314 Thompson Harbor Road. I'm on the Board of Assessors. And before I get started, I just want to introduce a young lady in the front row, Lynda McQuade. She is our lead assessor. And I have to tell you, you know, being working professionals, this is a really nicely operation and a really good team that she's done. And hopefully, next year, we'll be able to tell you how much she has saved, saved our town. It's working really well, so thank you so much, Lynda. Will you take my hat off to you? Can everybody hear me? Okay, now they can. Okay, we're asking the town to essentially approve three exemptions, 17e, F, and D. And what these are going to do is essentially incorporate a cost of living allowance. So that means we won't have to invite you every year to come back and approve a very, very small amount. And essentially, if we should be, the town adopt the exemption clause of 17e and F, both clauses C and D will allow the automatic incorporation of these. C and D are, 17D and 41c are our main exemptions, okay? So a little bit of an outline in history. Basically, this, the town adopted the first one, the 17 series, in 1998. It hasn't changed. There's been no increases. And essentially, it's still stuck at the exemption amount of $185. With regard to the 41c, it was approved in 2006. It has essentially been stable, nothing's changed until last fall. And that's when the town agreed to make some changes. And essentially, we did two things. We changed the age, if you remember, went from 70 down to 65. And we also looked across all the towns and realized that we should increase the amount we're giving them. And so right now, it's $1,000. So with regard to what we're looking at in terms of future costs, our anticipated Consumer Price Index increase for 2025 is 1.8%. Total reimbursement increase for each of the 41c recipient households is 18 whole dollars for the whole year. Okay, additional, the 1d cost, 41d, excuse me, cost to the town, will be a total of $342. And you're saying, why are we doing this for that? Why, it's a rounding error? The reality is, we need to have your approval on those three, so this just becomes an automatic process. And as the DOR says, you can't, you have to have these if you want to move ahead. Okay, the 41c cost to the town will be, the total 41c is $9,840. That's after the state reimbursement of 502. Remember, we give away 1,000, or, excuse me, we don't charge them for the 1,000, state reimburses us for 502, the rest of town picks up. The total 41c cost is $4,100 for Lunenburg households, oh, excuse me, the total cost per 4,100 Lunenburg residents is $2.39 to run this whole program. Again, we really could appreciate just saying yes to this big number. Okay. Questions? How is it calculated? The COLA adjustments are defined by the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Consumer Price Index, CPI, and approved by the Mass. Commissioner of Revenue, for the previous year as determined the rate of 100%. They're going to give you 100% of the cost of living increase. Will a town have to vote to approve the COLA adjustments annually? No, it's going to become automatic. Any changes beyond the currently approved baseline schedule would require that we come back to you and ask for your approval, or anything beyond that schedule of the cost of living. Will the town's reimbursement amount from the state of Massachusetts see a COLA increase? No. Not currently, anyway. We continue to reimburse at a rate of, receive the reimbursement rate of $502. And any other changes, all changes beyond the scope of the COLA increase will require a separate vote of approval by the town. So. There we go. I didn't mean to go that far. But hopefully, you'll support it, and we won't have to come back here next year and go through this again.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's the right answer for these people that need the help. By the way, if you notice, those numbers weren't really that big in terms of how we're helping him. There's one other exemption that's floating around there, and it's the 41a. It's a deferral. And it means that you essentially don't have to pay the taxes, or you can portion, only a small portion of it. We'll be, it's there now, it can be used. Your home can be worth more than $1.1 million, and you can also earn more than $100,000, right? But there's a lot of other pieces into it. It gives us now the ability to make sure people don't have to lose their homes. And that's really what we're after. We don't want to drive anybody out of their homes because of taxes. Okay?
But that's not before us, right?
I'm sorry?
That portion that you just talked about is not before us.
It's not before us, and it's just something we want you to know it's coming, because we know.
So the message is, go to the Board of Assessors office and find out what you're eligible for.
Every time. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, anybody on the microphones have further questions about this? Kathy tells me we're ready to vote. So it's Article 6, it's a simple majority, it's open, you may start voting now. No, I can tell people are still awake, because we're up over 200. Okay, voting is now closed, what are the results? Simple majority, more than simple, 203 to 6, it passes. And we are on to Article 7, please. Mr. Jeffries?
I vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg by deleting Section 250-4.9, entitled Water Supply District in its entirety, and inserting a new Section 250-4.9, entitled Water Supply Protection District, as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant booklet.
Is there a second? I assume he's going to correct that, but he did say I vote. You meant to say I vote.
Thank you.
I know what you meant. All right. Is there a second? Yes, thank you. Select Board, your recommendation?
Select Board, I had one abstention, but we voted to defer.
Voted to defer, so you're going to take a public vote at the end of the debate. And Finance?
No financial impact.
No financial impact, that was easy, huh? Okay, my notes say that the Chairman of the Planning Board is going to make a presentation and answer questions. Introduce yourself where you live and tell us your role.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Matthew Brenner, I live at 619 Northfield Road, and I am the Playing Board Chairperson. What you're going to take a look at tonight is, hopefully, the last time we have to consider water supply protection for a very long time. Why this? Why now? And the big answer is, our current water supply protection by law is over 30 years old. A lot of changes have happened in terms of environmental regulation, in terms of engineering, and that's actually a very good thing for the town, we'll look at that in a moment. What we did as a Planning Board, is knowing that there's been a lot of public input in the past, we set aside two meetings, just as really come on in and hashed it out sections, sessions. We invited in the public, we invited in the water district commissioners, and we talked, and tried to find a compromise that would work for everybody. If you've watched those meetings, you know they were very long, there was a lot of discussion. I think we landed in a really good place. Your big highlights, this bylaw is going to give back property rights to landowners they haven't had for over 30 years. People are going to be able to do more with their land than they could previously. While doing this, at the same time, we can increase the amount of environmental protection, the protection our water supply gets. This will also update our map, the map of these different zones for water supply protection, to match the current map from the DEP, which is, I believe, dated 2021. And that is our up-to-date understanding of the aquifers in town. It modernizes terminology to bring things up to date, the current law references things that don't really exist. And finally, it provides additional safeguards for residents near public wellheads. Big takeaway, the one that's going to impact the most people by far, you're going to be able to use more of your land if you're in one of these protection zones. Right now, the rule is, no more than 20% impervious. That's your roof, that's your driveway, anything that stops water from soaking in cannot be more than 20% of your land. Now, we're killing that. Instead, we're saying that if you're under 15%, great, but can go over, you can go over 20%. Engineering's gotten better. So you can do more with your land, provided you're still mitigating water runoff appropriately, so that water can get into the aquifers where it belongs, not sheeting across the ground, creating problems for the town. Our big goals were to make it straightforward and easy. For those who are in Zone 2, which is the areas that charge the aquifers, anything that is, that needs to be reviewed is done by special permit. However, we made sure that special permit process mirrors our stormwater process. Why? Because most developments that are going to be doing this would also need to go through the stormwater process. Again, trying to make it simple. In Zone 3, you don't even need a special permit approach, all you need is site plan approval, which is really a checklist, very straightforward, very easy, just gives the Playing Board the ability to say, yep, okay, you're doing the right things to protect the water supply. If you have more questions, we can dive into details in this, I've been working with it for a long time, we can get into the weeds, I'm not trying to shy you away from understanding. I think a lot of us have heard a lot about this already, and I don't want to belabor you with details. There's some minor changes to the allowed uses. In general, Zones 1, 2, and 3 all remain the same, with some updated terminology. One of the big changes is technically right now, in a lot of the town, you're technically not allowed to have salt for your driveway. That's the bylaw, as it stands. Now, that's silly, right? People have salt for their driveway. And even on a larger scale, the way we can handle that is much better than it was 30 years ago. So, again, for things like chemical storage, we've upgraded what people can do. This also contains an update to the map, you probably, you may have gotten a copy when you came in as well. And again, this is just the map update from 2021, showing the current, most recent knowledge about our aquifers in town, how they get charged, and where the runoff goes to charge them. That's really it. I know that there is an amendment on the floor, well, probably about to be approached. Bear.
Rumor has it somebody's going to make an amendment. But in the meantime, if there's any questions, people have comments? Go ahead.
Hello, John Rabbit, 314 Thompson Harbor Road. With regard to the impermeability and the expansion of the area close to the wetlands, are we attempting to override any kind of DEP requirements, such as nothing touched within 30 feet of the wetland? Is that being affected, or?
Not, oh, may I answer?
Go ahead, please.
Not at all. No. This does not impact wetlands or conservation at all. This is about protecting our aquifers, and that's defined differently. Again, so Zone 1 is an area around public wellheads. Public's defined a little differently, it's defined by the volume of water put out, that's why we have some private public wellheads in town. There's a certain radius around that, commonly 400 feet, could be different, could be less. Zone 2 are the areas that, if you go straight down, you're charging the aquifer. Water there can soak down and eventually get into the aquifer, which is where we all draw our drinking water from. Zone 3 are the areas that drain into Zone 2. So the water doesn't get right into the aquifer, it has to cross land, and then gets into the aquifer. We're talking about these, this has, separate from conservation and wetlands, all conservation rules still imply in town.
Thank you very much. I totally agree with your approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let her speak next, because she might have a question, I know you have an amendment, so go right ahead.
Hello.
Hello.
Jack is always so nice. I might not be as nice. I have a couple of questions. Actually, I used to be on the Conservation Commission.
We'd like to know your name and address.
Oh, Joy Derner, 291 Sunset Lane, Lunenburg. I was on the Conservation Commission, seems like a long time ago now. We all know Marion Benson always had her eyes on the wells on the lakes. And I have a couple of questions. First of all, why? We have land outside Keatings, that Keatings already has a well, that water is going out to Lancaster, why can't we go outside of our lakes? We know this is going to impact our lakes. If you try to draw from the lakes, it is definitely going to impact the lakes. Not yet.
No, go, go.
Thank you. So I really don't understand why, when you think you should be able to come in and take, and I get it, we're supposed to share, why you should be able to come in and take from our water on our lake, and Hickory Hills, and whatever lakes are there, that we should just share? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Go right ahead, Mr. Brenner.
So, oh, thank you. The good news, or bad news, depending how you're looking at it, is I have absolutely, and I, well, I say I, the, your Planning Board has absolutely no control over what you've just discussed. And this is, this is where things get weird, right? Welcome to government. The water district... The Wa, uh, the Water District, they have domain, to my understanding, over wells, where we get, where they get put, all of our water stuff. That is my back-of-the-napkin answer for that. That's not my area of expertise. Your Planning Board is charged with land use in general. So although we've consulted with residents who had strong opinions, often about particular wells, often about wells at lakes, that is, their feedback was taken. The bylaw is about water use, not even water use, it's about protecting the groundwater. This does not change. There's a map, but the wellheads on that map are the ones that exist. They're ones that have been specified. This is all DEP's data. None of that has changed. How much water is taken, where it's taken from, what it's used for, is not addressed by this bylaw that is a separate organization within municipal government. I hope that answers your question. It may not.
Not really. No, I understand. You did a good answer. You did, you know, you did your job. But it just seems there's like a lot of politics in here, um, coming after wells on the lake. There's got to be other places to go. I mean, that, I guess that's where I'm going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
John Fortune, 15 Hemlock Drive. Yes, I would, first, I'd just like to start by thanking the Planning Board. As Matt mentioned, there was a lot of work that went into this. There was a lot of input from the residents. Myself and others included gave a lot of input into this, into the wording that's, that's there. So again, thank you for all the work that was done on that. I would like to make an amendment, though. I would move to amend the Lunenburg Water Supply Protection District, warrant Article Seven, to include the following additions. Number one, by adding to the end of the definition of Zone One in Section C, the phrase, provided, however, that Zone One ends at the water's edge and does not extend into the waters of Hickory Hills Lake, Lake Shirley, or Whalen Lake. And, number two, by adding that same phrase to the end of Section D. This came about by...
Just hold on, hold on. So that's your amendment what's on the screen?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment? Okay, there's a second to the amendment. Okay, now you can start to explain your amendment.
Sure. During much of the discussions that we had, or what came up during the discussions that we had, was some feedback from the Planning Board that they had gotten from DEP that essentially said Zone One ends at the water's edge. And the vote taken to get to where we are today was based on that principle. All this is doing in this amendment is I'm just adding that into the article itself so that that's not lost over time. And again, it helps to protect the waters of the lakes, as the previous speaker was mentioning.
Okay. Questions on the amendment to start, and then we'll get to the entire article. But let's talk about the amendment, Mrs. Pease.
Joan Pease, Levin Winter Green Corp. I attended several of the Planning Board meetings where this was discussed, and I feel that this amendment clearly reflects what the Planning Board was saying at the meetings and improves the clarity of Article Seven, and I'm going to vote to approve this amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Brenner, would you like to address the amendment?
Absolutely. From a purely legal standpoint, I do not believe this is strictly necessary. However, I'm also going to be clear. If we're going to amend this, this is absolutely the way to do it, because we're not changing the map itself, which is key, because we get that map from DEP. And also being real, this map harms nothing. We have other language in the bylaw saying that if you're in Zone One and it's on water, you can still do all the water activities you like. However, this harms nothing, and it gives many of our residents greater sense of peace. So is it necessary from a legal perspective? My understanding is no. Is it helpful for residents to feel comfortable with this process? My understanding is yes, and I think there's real value in that.
Well, let's, let's... And then you'll have to get it off the screen. Okay, all right. Making sure we got all the language right.
Yep.
So what's on the, what's on the screen is the exact language that you want in your amendment, correct?
That is correct, yes. And that has been run by the Town Attorney as well.
Okay. So do you want to address the art, the amendment any longer?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, Dave McDonald, 155 Island Road. Mr. Chair of the Planning Board. Matt, I want to thank you very much. This has been going on for a lot of years. You see the vision. You see what's, what's happening. My wife and I, we just want to thank you for finally putting this to bed. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else on the, anybody else on the amendment? Okay, so we're going to make sure that Kathy has this exact, but for the moment, this is exactly what you're voting on on the amendment. Amendments are majority vote. So we're ready to vote. Simple majority on the amendment first, then we go back to the article. So if you're in favor of the amendment...
Mr. Moderator, I just want to clarify. This is not a two-thirds. I thought these were two-thirds.
The article is two-thirds. Amendments are majority.
Okay, my apologies. I thought amendments were also two-thirds. Not a problem at all. Thank you.
Good point of order. Okay, so we're going to, ready to vote for the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment are going to vote yes. Those opposed are going to vote no. And when we have two hundred or so votes, we're ready. Vote now. No, nobody's still thinking. This just takes a while for the signal to get through. All right, voting is now closed. How many in favor of the amendment? Hundred and seventy-eight versus twenty-five, clearly more than a majority. So the article is now amended. Now, the article in total is before you. Anybody want to discuss the article in totality? Yes?
Joan Pease, Levin Winter Green Corp. One of the things in the article that is important for people to understand is that it is a compromise between wants of the Water District and concerns of people who live on the town lakes. The present bylaws do not allow any construction in any Zone One. The Water District wanted absolutely no restrictions on construction, and we settled on a special permit. The special permit does allow the Planning Board to say no to a construction project if they feel it's not in the best interest of the town or the neighborhood. And I feel that this compromise is good because it allows the Water District to build a construction plant in Zone One around Keatings, which is in a commercial zone. The present rules do not allow that. So I am going to be voting to approve this amendment, I'm not, this article, with this amendment. The other thing I would like to say is the map that was up on the board before was truncated and did not show one of the Water Districts. The map you were given at the front door shows all of the Water Districts. So we're voting on the map that was distributed at the front door. Am I correct?
Yes, that was, that was an image file I had handy.
Okay. I have a second question on the map. The map that was handed out at the front door has notations on it in text boxes. Will we be voting on the map that has the text boxes or on the map that does not have the text boxes?
Mr. Brenner?
To my understanding, we are voting on a map that does not have text boxes. I would actually look to double-check. The map we are looking at, so again, the map as we have it comes from DEP. I actually, I've seen so many iterations of all of this over the past few years. I apologize for being a little fuzzy on the exact details there.
But here's, here's my concern.
Yeah.
My concern is the map was omitted from the booklet the town sent out with warrant articles, and now we have a map on the screen that is different from the map that was handed out to the people here. The map that was handed out has notations on it that are different and additions than the one that was up on the screen. If we're going to be voting on this, we need to all be on the exact same page as to the clarity of which map is being referred to in this warrant article.
All right, so let's call on Town Council, who's diligently researching your question and will provide you the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the record, Adam Costa, Town Council. So if you look to the text of the proposed bylaw, it's subsection or Section D, it refers to the map as a map entitled Lunenburg Water District Aquifer Protection Zones dated July 2021, which is hereby made a part of the bylaw. That is this document that was handed out, as I understand it, at the front desk. But to your point, there are annotations that are on this document, specifically two text boxes together with some arrows that identify the district and refer to language from the bylaw, as well as refer to certain recharge areas, again, with accompanying language from the bylaw. My understanding, having just briefly consulted with the interim Town Manager, is that these are simply for the purposes of the handout and are explanatory for the information of the body, hence the writing at the top of this document that says, "Special Town Meeting, Article Seven." But the actual map itself that is incorporated into the bylaw that you would be adopting with a yes vote tonight on Article Seven would be this handout without the text boxes and without the additional writing at the top referring to Article Seven.
Thank you. And, and again, the one up on the screen is truncated, and it leaves out a well and a, uh, Zone One that are down the bottom. I believe that's Lake Shirley area. It is on the map that the DEP supplied that is dated, uh, July 2021, is it? I mean, yeah.
And Mr. Mo...
Go right ahead.
Mr. Moderator, through you. So, so that's correct. So I want you to refer still to this handout that you received, because this handout does have that additional area on it. And it also includes importantly the title of the map at the bottom left-hand side, Lunenburg Water District Aquifer Protection Zones with the date of July 2021. That's what's referenced in the bylaw. So it will be this map that you see in your handout with the elimination of the writing at the top and the two text boxes with the arrows.
Thank you for that clarification, and I'm going to vote to support this Article Seven with the amendment.
Good to know. Go right ahead. Does anybody else, Mr. Alonso?
I just want to comment that this is the third time, I believe, that this has come before the town, and this is a great example of how government sometimes works, is that there's a lot of interest in what the effects of such bylaws would be and such articles would be, and they go back with more knowledge, and they go back to discuss with the opponents and the proposers, and they come back, and then they come back another time. So instead of, there, there's a potential for people to saying, wow, why does everything take so long? Well, because you really want to get it right. And so I want to applaud everybody who participated in the process so that it was gotten right. So thank you to everybody who did that.
Great. Okay, no, we're ready to get a recommendation from the Select Board.
Any additional discussion?
And then take a vote by roll call, please.
I would move that we recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Emke?
Epstein.
Selectman Alonso?
Aye.
Selectman Moore?
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. The Select Board recommends approval, four to one abstention.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, we declare we're ready to vote. It is a two-thirds vote. So you, voting is now open. You may vote now. Okay, it looks like we're done clicking up. Okay, voting is now closed. Two-thirds majority, please. Result passed. There you go. Okay, moving on to Article Eight on... All right, all right, all right. Article Eight on the Council of Agents Revolving Fund. Did I mention that our great Director of the Council of Agents, that our Director at the Senior Center, Adult Activity Center is leaving us? Yeah, one more month. Ms. Moore, please move Article Eight.
I move to, one, amend the code of Lunenburg, Section 138-5D, entitled Authorized Revolving Funds by the creation of an additional revolving fund to be named COA Meal Site Revolving Fund and administered as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant Booklet, booklet. And, two, set the FY25 spending limit at sixteen thousand dollars and no cents.
Is there a second? Thank you. Select Board?
Select Board recommends approval.
Finance Committee? Thank you. Anyone with questions, thoughts on this article? Seeing no one, I'll declare we're ready to vote. Voting is now open. It is a simple majority, Council on Agents Revolving Fund. I had predicted we'd be done by nine o'clock, but I'll tell you what, we got started late, so we'll see. Kathy apologizes. She just told me, and she's doing her best. It's been a hard week for the registrars and voters. Okay, we've got a hundred and sixty-eight, hundred and seventy-two, still climbing. Some people are voting on their way out. Okay, it looks like we've ticked away. Okay, what are the results? Article Eight, a hundred and seventy-nine, two opposed. It passes by more than a simple majority. Article Nine, Mr. Alonso?
I move to, one, amend code of Lunenburg, Section 138-5, Subsection D, entitled Authorized Revolving Funds by the creation of an additional revolving fund to be named Parks Programming Revolving Fund and administered as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant booklet. Two, set the FY25 spending limit at seventy-seven thousand dollars and no cents. And three, transfer all funds remaining in the Parks Revolving Fund established under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53D, by Article Seven of the Special Town Meeting of February 6, 1984, as amended by Article 11 of the Special Town Meeting of October 14, 1986. And four, revoke the town's prior acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53D, and dissolve the aforementioned 53D revolving fund upon the transfer of all funds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board?
Recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Recommend approval for yes, one abstain.
One abstention, okay. Thank you very much. Someone want to address this? I see, uh, you didn't leave us yet. It's a long ride back to New Hampshire, Mr. Passios. Okay, anyone else up at the microphone want the speaker to address this? I'll recognize you, Mr. Passios. I'll sponsor you if you will.
Dave Passios, as I announced before, former resident of Lunenburg. I just want this body to know that the town is moving into an era where we're not doing things the way we always did them. And some of us know more than others as to what I'm speaking about. The previous article and this article are steps to correct things that we've just always done the way we've done it, and not necessarily the way it's supposed to be done. So I expect that in May, you may see more corrective articles of this type as we move forward. It's been very frustrating. It was frustrating for me to spend many years in this municipal government, questioning the way we did things, knowing they weren't supposed to be done that way, but the, it answers at the top, well, we've always done it this way, and we're not going to change it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Article Nine? Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll declare we're ready to vote. I believe this is a simple majority. Voting is now open. We should have music in the background, don't you think? Okay, I think that looks like it's everybody. Voting is now closed. One of the... Okay, I think that looks like it's everybody. Voting is now closed. What are the results? 169 in favor, four opposed. Obviously more than a majority. That article passes. We are on to Article Ten, I believe. Ms. Emke?
I move to request the Select Board to prepare a report and present the same to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting that would have the intent of a sale or long-term lease of the Brooks House situated on 1033 Massachusetts Avenue, as printed in the warrant and projected on the slide.
Okay, so the problem we have with projecting on the slide, which you and I had agreed to, is we can't read it all. Can we scroll that up at all, Danny?
That's actually the bottom. I have another slide that--
So you've got this three, the first three, and it's in your warrant, and there's the other three. Okay?
Do I need to--
That's seconded. Select Board, what's your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval.
Okay, and Finance Committee?
No financial impact.
Okay. Now, this is a request of the Select Board. It's not binding. Is there any objection to anyone in the body accepting that what's printed on the board in the two slides and what's printed in your warrant gives you sufficient knowledge of what we're voting on? Any objection to that? Seeing none, we're going to proceed. Go ahead. Anybody that wants to address this article? Go right ahead. Ms. Emke, just wanted to save her voice for later.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Scollbrany. I live at Five Alley Road. I'm the Chair of the Architectural Preservation District Commission. And I'd like to introduce Nathan Lockwood. He's a fellow commissioner, and he's just going to explain a little bit about the history of the Brooks House, and then we'll answer questions if you have any.
All right, thanks, Anthony. So pictured here is the Brooks House. Folks may recognize it very close to where we are right now. It's right over on Mass Ave at the entrance to the high school and the Passios Building. So the purpose of this article, that was sort of crafted initially by the Architectural Preservation District Committee and shared with our colleagues on the other boards, is to save the Brooks House from demolition without using taxpayer money. The Brooks House is an attractive historic building located at 1033 Mass Ave. The article seeks to create the conditions for the building's restoration, renovation, and valuable reuse using private funds and initiative. In order to achieve this, the article asks Town Meeting to request the Select Board to repair a report to sell or lease the building. The Brooks House has a rich history, also in that red book that the--
Ah, red book!
--was selling its book. Predating the Civil War, it was built by Samuel Bailey in 1837. It was sold to Fernando Brooks in 1870. At that point, it became the Brooks Farm. Fernando's son Warren lived there with his wife Ida. The house operated as a youth hostel for a period in the 1940s. After Warren died, his wife sold the property to the town in 1946 for use as the school department offices. It's an architecturally significant building located at a prominent vista approaching the Lunenburg Town Center. Its present condition is habitable, but in need of significant repair. The building's been used by the town as the school's offices until around 2011, not too long ago, when it was relocated, the offices were relocated to the current office in the TC Passios Building. Following that, the property was partially leased to Lunenburg Ledger for a brief period until roughly five years ago. More recently, the main area of the house was occupied by the Lunenburg Public Schools Facilities Director, who has since also moved to the Passios Building. As a result, the Brooks House is currently being mostly used for school storage, while the town continues to incur costs to heat the building and maintain the envelope. The Brooks House is one of the buildings that the Town Building Reuse Committee, with varying memberships over about 10 years now, has been considering for town government purposes. So the Building Reuse Committee, people are familiar with, this is a group in town that's been appointed by the Select Board and other boards to look at ways to reuse various public buildings, especially around Town Center, that currently aren't being used. The general consensus of this committee is that the Brooks House is not well-suited for the requirements of Town Departments. The property is the Architectural Preserv-- is in the Architectural Preservation District, which is a district around that encompasses the Village Center District and falls under the protections of this zoning bylaw. As such, the building cannot be demolished without the consent of the APDC or a vote at Town Meeting, which is good. This is historic property. We want to be able to have a say before it, you know, gets knocked down or something, so that we have an opportunity to save it. These protections are necessary but not sufficient for the preservation of this building. Absent a compelling use for the building, the town is unlikely out of fiscal responsibility to continue to allocate the funds needed to prevent the building from falling into disrepair. Common sense. Without private reuse, the building will likely end up being demolished due to progressive neglect by the town, much like the old primary school building before it. We, folks who have been around a while, saw this happen, and that building was demolished recently when it reached a point where it could no longer be rehabilitated in any cost-effective manner. At present, the building is still structurally sound overall. It is attractive for private mixed-use repurposing due several factors. So the district it's in, the Village Center, has permissive mixed-use zoning, which means basically that if someone bought the building, by right, they would be able to put in a coffee shop, a small business, an office, something like that. They could, you know, they would be guaranteed that they could use the building for something like that, and that makes it attractive to purchase. The building is equipped with emergency exits, enhancing its adaptability for a wide range of commercial uses. And it's in a good location. There's potential for good foot traffic in a convenient location with visibility on Mass Ave and Town Center. Therefore, given the following facts, the building is desirable for private mixed-use repurposing. The town does not have a public use for the building at this time. The property is not critical for other town plans. Its size and the location of the parcel are in no way essential for further redevelopment of the town's property for other uses. Now, just a comment on this. So it is in the Village Center District. One nice thing about the Village Center District, some folks might be thinking, well, I know my house had to be built on like, you know, two acres because of the zone I'm in or something. In the Village Center District, it is, the bylaw that was passed several years ago to make, to support higher density and more combination of business and residential use in the Town Center, allows for really small offsets. So you can have a building on a lot with, I forget the exact dimensions, but, you know, five or 10 feet around the building, and that's it as far as what you need for the land. So it's possible basically to carve out the parcel for this building and its parking lot without having to take a big chunk out of the town property. And the land that it's on really is not essential to any current town plans. Residents of the town have consistently prioritized preservation and retention of the town's historic character and structures, both by passing the Architectural Preservation District bylaw in 2015, and as recently as 2024 in surveys and public working sessions related to the master plan. So the town keeps, you know, whenever they were asked, folks say, you know, one thing I like about Lunenburg is its history and how that history is reflected in some of the buildings that have been here a long time. And people kind of have an innate sense that you, you can't go backwards. Once you knock those down, they're gone, and now you look like pretty much anywhere else. So, um, so, sorry, I, it's, what are we? Okay. Okay, sorry, go ahead. So the needed protective repairs and routine maintenance and upkeep are costly to town. Renovating the building would be costly to town. Demolishing the building would be costly to the town. Conveying or leasing the building and allow it for private use would produce tax revenue. Private uses could also provide meaningful value for town residents, businesses that we like, that sort of thing, while preserving an attractive historic landmark at a key vista and the entryway to our historic Village Center. Solving the future of this building further simplifies the overall equation of building reuse. So it's our contention that if we, if we straighten out what the future is for this building, it'll make the Building Reuse Committee's job easier. They'll have less buildings to focus on. We believe requesting the Select Board to move forward in exploring and crafting sale or lease options for this property would be good for Lunenburg. Thank you very much, and special thanks to the Select Board and to Carter for helping us make some needed revisions to this to enable us to get it to Town Meeting today.
Great. Mr. Scollbrany, you done?
We are. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. All right. Well, Bowen, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to block off that seat someday.
I'm sorry, I again.
Go ahead.
I just had--
No, no.
I just had-- Hi, John Bowen, 162 On Street. I think it's a great idea. I'm about preservation. So I think that's absolutely a great idea. The issue that I have is, is that where's the cost going to come from the buyer that we sell it to, to do the survey, to take the land away from the school, you know what I mean, and to do all the work that would be necessary to be able to transfer that plot of land, which I believe was mentioned at the Select Board's last meeting, that it is actually on school property. And then who's going to pay and finance that particular aspect of it? Is it going to be on the town? And we have to vote for that at the next Town Meeting if this is approved today? Or is this going to be handled by the prospective buyer? And is the town going to continue to maintain the exterior of the building, to heat the building, until we find a buyer? Because if we're going to preserve something, it's going to have to be taken care of so it's still sellable. So that's going to be a cost that we're all going to have to want to take. And I just want to know, if we're taking it and it's not the buyer, what, how long do you plan on keeping this building up for sale for commercial use? And how long does the Select Board plan on spending money to keep it operational?
Okay. Mr. Bowen, I think we're way ahead of the process. This is an article suggesting that the Select Board get working on a project, start making ideas, getting recommendations. I believe that's the scope of what we're doing here. How we're going to spend, what we're going to spend, who's going to spend, all those things are so far ahead in the process.
Well, it said in the, it said in that, Mr. Moderator, it said that the town is soon going to stop paying because of the fiscal situation, stop paying to keep the heat on or repairing the exterior.
Mr. Bowen, that's not what's in the article.
It's in the article. He just read it.
The town will continue to pay for the building until a decision is made about demolition--
Okay.
--or you--
That's what I was asking. They're going to preserve it until you sell it.
Yeah. There is, there is, I mean, the town owns a piece of property. Now, I can tell you, the town isn't spending much on the building. Now, in terms of a survey, yes, you know, we would have to do that.
I understand that.
And we've talked with the interim Town Manager about that. It's not a major expense. And in fact, I've spoken with the Land Use Director and asked him if there was a plot plan, a meet some bonds, a bond survey for the Brooks House. And we don't have the answer to that question, but we are seeking information about what did the Brooks House have when it became part of town property. But, you know, the survey cost is relatively small, probably less than $500.
Yeah, no, that's, I understand that. I was just concerned that what you had said, where you made the reference to the other school that just went in disrepair and just fell apart, that needs to be demolished, that if you don't keep maintaining the exterior, don't keep the heat on the inside till you sell it, that thing's just going to be the same building. And that's what you had said. And that's what's my concern, is that, will we keep the heat on?
Yeah, so, so, sorry, that, apologies for if that caused any confusion. So the town has consistently voted to continue the maintenance and upkeep. That statement was simply speculating the trajectory over time. As we get further and further from the time when that building has had a really compelling use, what we've seen with other buildings is, at some point, you know, we hit some fiscal hardship, and that, that would be the kind of thing that, you know, we're not suggesting it should be cut, but it could happen. So the sooner we do transition it to, you know, private stewardship, the better off we--
Right, because I know the puppet playhouse up the street used to be like a little gift shop and stuff like that. And what's the problem with putting something like that right in the center of town? You know, with people to be able to like rent rooms in it to be able to sell their goods in town instead of sitting outside outdoors in a farmer's market. Put the people in there, just like they do at Jeffries. Just to make it a little bit more homey.
But, all right.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote on asking the Select Board to prepare a report and present it to the next annual Town Meeting. It's non-binding.
Can I ask one question?
Give me a moment.
Are we voting?
Who's asking me a question? I didn't recognize you yet. Go up to the microphone if you want to be recognized. You kind of know the process. Go ahead, Mr. Passios. Introduce--
This will be very quick.
--the select again.
I just, I just need to understand that this article in no way authorizes the Board of Selectmen to sell the land and/or the building. This has nothing to do with that process.
Mr. Passios--
Could I have an answer from, through you from Town Council, please?
You may, but I just read, it's to request the Select Board to prepare a report.
But it also says further on in the explanation that there will be continually advertising, offering until an offer is accepted.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Jeffries. Go ahead.
To clarify, in 2019, Town Meeting authorized the Select Board to sell this building, but it did not authorize the Select Board to sell the building and the land. So, you know, the only way you can sell the house is if someone comes up and moves it. So as I read this article, there's no funding request associated with this. The assumption is that these tasks can be completed without any additional funds and largely are already within the authority of the Select Board. So this is a encouragement for the Select Board to focus in an area that, again, my understanding is that everything that's being asked is already within the authority of the Select Board.
Okay, so beyond those steps, there would have to, for that to be turned over to a private entity, the land would either have to be leased or would have to go before Town Meeting to be released and sold by the Board of Selectmen by their authorization?
Through the moderator--
Go ahead.
Mr. Passios, you're correct. So in order for the town to enter into a significant lease, we would need to get Town Meeting approval for it. In order for us to convey the property, we would also need to get Town Meeting approval for it. So what this is asking us essentially to do is to research what would be required to do that.
Thank you.
Great. Kathy says you'd like to vote. I think I agree. Article Ten is now before you. Are we ready? We are. Please vote now. You know, of course, the Kathy's chirping in my ear back here through the whole meeting. I'm not ignoring you. Okay, I think one or two more. Let me see. All right, it's non-binding, but it's a request for the Select Board to prepare some reports. All those in favor? What's the vote? Voting's now closed. 168 against seven. Select Board, you've got your work to do. Article, the article passes. Article 11, thank you, Kathy. Mr. Nuzzulo.
I move to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Chapter 70, entitled Salary Administration Plan, and add a Chapter 71 to be entitled Employment Contracts by Making Certain Deletions and Strikethrough and Additions in bold italic, as printed in the Special Town Meeting Warrant booklet, with said amendments to be effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board?
Select Board recommended approval, three yes, one no, one abstention.
Thank you. And Finance?
Finance recommended approval, four yes, one no.
Thank you. Anyone want to address this article? Mr. Terenzini?
Good evening. My name is Carter Terenzini. I'm your interim Town Manager, and first let me thank you for taking some time out of your evening to participate in this Town Meeting. For those of you who are employers, trying to hire people in this job market is no surprise to you. For those of you who work at a machine or a desk, where the desk next to you or the machine to you has not had someone bind it for quite a while, this is nothing new to you. COVID has turned the marketplace for employment completely on its head, unlike anything I've seen in my very short number of years in this profession. We are trying to address the retention, recruitment, and retention issues. This article would address recruitment by reducing the time for us to hire. Currently, if we had a personnel board, I hope you'll pick up one of the flyers and sign up to perhaps join it. The Town Manager, if they want to hire someone above Step One entry level, they have to get a hold of the Chair of the Personnel Committee. They have to get enough members. The meeting has to be posted. We have to hope there's a quorum. I think you can see that elapsed time can weigh against our ability to retain someone quickly. Right now, if you come to work for the town of Lunenburg and you are sick, in the first six months, you get no time paid off. You are accruing it, but you cannot use it for the first six months. Imagine you're a mom-- Imagine you're a mom, single dad, trying to take care of the children, and you have to face that, as should I take this job or not? We have employees who come to us with considerable public service. Our new land use administrator, 25 years. I have other people in this audience who've joined you, 25 and 30 years. And we ask them to come here and leave their five weeks of vacation behind, or their four weeks, and to start all over at the bottom. We can't compete against towns which are now saying, if you have that professional service, we will give you that credit as well. And finally, in terms of recruitment, the statutes allow employment contracts for some of our staff, but not all of our department heads. So, we have situations in which a specific department head perhaps can have a contract and someone who works right across the hall from them cannot. This would put in place a local bylaw allowing us to do that, putting everyone on the same footing and eliminating some of the ill will that can happen. With respect to retention of our current employees, there would be merit awards, once a year, three in specific categories. Not a lot of money, $250, but I can tell you in communities where we've done it, it really does lead to a sense of professional honor in their job that they're doing and a sense of camaraderie. We are proposing to create a townwide sick leave bank. Right now, if someone is sick, they don't have enough time, perhaps that department head puts the idea forward, perhaps they approach the town manager, perhaps it's approved, or perhaps it's not. These one-off kinds of situations are not good in an organization, and we want to make that available across the organization. And finally, it would offer holiday pay for our employees who work less than 20 hours. We rely to a great deal upon people working less than 20 hours. Many of them have second jobs. They simply can't, if the holidays on a Monday, work for us on Tuesday, they're committed elsewhere. And let me say that most of these things are becoming commonplace, and they've also grown out of a wide series of listening sessions that we had, in which we gathered our employees together in two meetings, one at Public Safety, one at Town Hall, and literally listened to what their suggestions were. Happy to answer any questions. Hope you'll find the ability to be supportive.
Thank you. Stay right there. They might have questions. Oh, here comes one. Thank you. Take them the hat off. Appreciate it.
Dave McDonald, 155 Island Road. Mr. Moderator, through you, can I ask a comment? Couple of questions I got for you. Can, can you hear me okay? One, one is, I've been on the Personnel Committee for seven years, and talking with people tonight, I think we got some people that want to join. Why haven't you guys made an effort to replace the Personnel Committee? And secondly, why did the Personnel Committee leave? No, no one's talking. The other question I got is, how can you make these changes without an SAP? You're, you're changing the bylaws of the town, the town charter. You're a town manager. You should be saying, wait a minute, we can't do this. I'm all for the employees. Trust me. But I want to do it the right way. We had an incident this summer where something changed the policies. All I'm saying is, think about this. Whatever we do, I want it long-term for these employees, to make them proud to work in Lunenburg. Right now, they're busting their butts. I know most of them. All I'm saying, Mr. Manager, is use your head on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me try to address them as I understood they were posed. First, what happened to the former Personnel Committee? I, I honestly don't know. It predated me. I believe that they resigned en masse, so what exactly happened, I'm afraid I don't know. I, I can't speak to that. Have we attempted to recruit for the position? It has been listed on the town website, spoken to numerous times, and most recently, I sent an email to a number of former members, asking if they would come and talk with me, that I might understand what had happened, so I could try to learn from that. Unfortunately, I did not get any response to that effort. I will say that you have all the list with the letter that the Chair wrote, and plenty of signup folders out there at the desk and online. So, I would hope that folks who have any questions about service on the Personnel Board would give us a call and talk about what the service is. Second, if I understood, or last, if I understood, was how can you amend the SAP without a Personnel I, I don't think we have a choice. These are things that are needed to recruit employees and to retain and reward those that we have. You have been without a Personnel Committee now for five or six months. Certainly, I hope folks sign up, but I don't think you can simply await a quorum of the Personnel Board to do this. These employment matters are occurring now.
Thank you. No. No. You, next time, stay at the microphone so you can do follow-up. Go ahead.
Thank you for your response. As far as the SAP, all I'm saying is, if we can wait a little bit, get the Personnel Committee together, and come up with something better. Right now, it just seems like you're rushing everything, and, and that's not good for anybody. I mean, I understand the need. I'm a business owner. I have a hard time getting employees. But you really don't if you keep recruiting. During your meetings, you don't mention the Personnel Committee that much, that you're looking for members. Right now, you should be saying, hey, anybody who wants to join, come see it, which is what you're doing. But the bottom line is, I don't like to be rushed on something like this. I want to do what's right for what's on, and I just don't think, this doesn't feel right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can only repeat, we are struggling to recruit employees now, and we are losing employees now. To continue to wait on a package that is, in my opinion, modest at best, I believe would be a mistake. But it's your community. You'll make the decision that's right for you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ron Delicia, 181 Reservoir Road. At a recent Select Board meeting, it came out that the town is not performing evaluations or any type of review on all its employees. So, it just makes me question why we would increase benefits to a level equivalent to the private sector, when we are not doing a basic thing that any good business in the private sector would do, which is to provide feedback to an employee on an annual basis and to make sure that the employees are performing the task listed on their job description. It just seems like, and I can imagine the Personnel Committee may have all resigned because there was not a balance between the best interests of the employees and the taxpayers. So, you know, I'm looking at this list of vacations. My husband works in the private sector. He gets six out of all those vacations, and we want to pay people who work 20 hours a week? I mean, I would need to know that the town is doing its part. And evaluations, we're supposed to be conducting them according to the charter as well. So, I agree with the previous speaker that we need a Personnel Committee and to wait on any changes.
Thank you. Over here, sir.
Christos Lekadakis, 49 Maple Parkway, President of Local 5369 Lunenburg Firefighters. First, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the interim town manager, if I may. Could he answer, how many employees in town currently make up the SAP?
I'm sorry, what?
How many employees in town make up the SAP?
About 85, I'm told.
Okay. So, I have some issues with this article. First off, the holiday pay. You've excluded majority of your SAP employees with the language in your article. Two of those departments for those employees are the Public Safety Building, a 24/7 operation. They don't get the option to take time off. Now, while I can't speak to the makeup of the Police Department, currently the Fire Department, because the town has continued to kick the can down the road regarding staffing, we now have to rely on call firefighters to work per diem shifts, one out of the seven days of the week. Currently, I was speaking with the Fire Chief, we look at those employees under the definition of intermittent employees. Therefore, under this proposed article, they're not entitled to holiday pay. So, therefore, there's no incentive for any of these employees to take a shift on a holiday. There's no incentive for them to come in, leave their families on a holiday, to come and answer any one of your emergencies in this town. How is that right? How can you exclude majority of your SAP? So, excuse me, I lost my train of thought. So, that, first off, needs to get changed. You know, we talk about, you know, recruiting in this article. You got to get your retention squared away first. Because we continue to chase phenomenal employees out of that town, one of which is sitting on that stage. And that should have never happened. You know, if you, you want your, your part as a town to retain your employees, they're going to do most of the legwork for you when it comes to recruitment. They're going to be the ones telling prospective employees that this is a great place to work. I think, Mr. Terenzini, speaking of listening sessions, I don't think, I think, can only assume that you got the vibe that this is not a great place to work. We need to fix that, and we need to work on retaining our employees before we start worrying about recruiting, because we're going to be playing a constant game of catch-up. You know, we talk about being equal amongst our employees. That's something at the bargaining table this town has preached to me. Well, there's two things in the SAP that shows that's a blatant lie. The bargaining table, the town wanted us, and we agreed to, change our longevity language from a percentage base to a flat rate, under the understanding that the town was moving to have all town employees have the same language, because it was easier to calculate than a percentage. We're almost two contract cycles through. That language in the SAP has not changed. Juneteenth was a federal mandated holiday for public employees. The town didn't want to increase the number of holidays that they paid, so they requested that the unions give up their floating holiday in exchange for receiving Juneteenth. We agreed. The SAP still has both. You can't sit here and say that you're going to be fair across the board when it's blatantly not true, okay? That's not bargaining good faith. This town needs to fix their issues.
Thank you. May I respond, Mr. Moderator? Go ahead, Mr. Terenzini.
I don't think we can relitigate the collective bargaining process of the number, past number of years here. When I first got here, I spoke with your Assistant Town Manager about a number of the issues that I saw, and should we try to address them? And the answer was that we should try to wait till the spring and perhaps have a Personnel Committee in place. And I respected that for several months. But there are things that need to be addressed now. We are trying to recruit employees now. We're losing employees now. We need to address it. The fact that it perhaps doesn't, one person believes we're going too far, one perhaps person believes we're not going quite far enough. So, I'm kind of happy with the position I'm proposing, frankly. It's your town. You can continue to struggle. Just might be the right answers, but I believe they are the first step forward.
Mr. Bowen, I'll get back to you, but I haven't heard from these other gentlemen. Mr. Lekadakis, just like Mr. McDonald, stay at the microphone if you've got a follow-up, so you don't have to get back to me.
So, my only response to that is, you know, I could believe agree with you. A lot of this is collective bargaining, and we've discussed that that wasn't something you could be able to do during your time here. It's just putting the point out there, that this town, long before you were here, has kicked the can down the road, okay? They're not addressing issues. It's plain and simple. And I don't see how you can say that this is a pretty good step forward, when I've already said that you're excluding almost half of your SAP employees because of a language issue. That needs to be addressed. Because guess what? When those SAP employees don't take those shifts, they're going to get filled by your full-time staff ordered, costing the town more money than it will for those people to take that shift. And we've already been ordered 46 times this year in a nine-person department. It's unacceptable. I've already publicly said that we are burnt out, and it needs to change. So, you know, the town needs to do what they need to do to change this.
Thank you.
May I, Mr. Moderator?
Go right ahead.
You're right. Town's kicked the can down the road many, many times. I hope tonight's not one of those.
Thank you. The gentleman over here, and I'll get, Mr. Bowen, you've had a lot of airtime, but I'll get back to you, I promise. Go right ahead.
Glenn McLeod, 436 Reservoir Road. I'd like to thank the Board, as well as the Assistant Town Manager, I mean, the interim Town Manager, for spearheading making Lunenburg, trying to make Lunenburg a better employer. Having spent 26 years working for a municipality, not Lunenburg, I understand how frustrating it is to have a municipal government as an employer. So, I applaud you for making Lunenburg a better employer. And I would fall on the side that this is a step in the right direction. It's not far enough, but the full, full support of it. One question, and, and I think that a previous speaker would be an excellent person to listen to in a sit-down, and how to make the, the town a, a better employer. If we don't have public safety, we don't have anything. A question, you mentioned someone like myself. If I were to come to Lunenburg, could I take my five weeks of vacation with me?
Under this, you would only be able to bring three.
Okay.
Because, because I was concerned about how far we could go and get it approved. So, under this proposal, you could bring three.
Because under, under the previous, the presentation, I took it as, I think specifically to the Land Use Director, that he would have the five weeks vacation.
It was used as an example. What you can do is, depending upon where you place somebody, depends how quickly they can move into that four-week range.
So, I, I think that needs to change immediately. If you are, if you want to become more of a destination, you, you know, anyone here that's in the private sector, you don't transfer laterally. Generally, in private sector, you're going to get a pay raise or added benefits. Here in municipal government, you know, your best-case scenario is to, to laterally transfer. So, to, to think that somebody with five weeks vacation logically would come here and give up that, you know, essentially three weeks vacation, I think is flawed logic. I, I, and I do have a prepared motion printed up to change in that article, simply the, I think it's Article G, I'm sorry, Paragraph G, where it spells that out. It says three. I would just simply change that to five. Change the, the word five and the, and the, the word three to the word five, and the numeral three to the numeral five. And I do think, to a previous speaker's point, there is a lot that needs to be improved in this, but I don't, there's a lot that needs to be improved in the old one, and that's an old, an old, old bylaw. So, I think we need to fix this as you're, as you are presenting with the, the added, added amendment, unless you guys are willing to just change it to five.
There's a form at the bottom of, did you already do it? There's a form down the bottom there. You have to put it on that form, okay? And just take a moment and keep writing it, and then I'm going to take a few other people-
Can I paperclip it to the?
Okay. Then you still have to put your name and signature on that form.
You have to love government.
I know, huh? Well, Kathy's had those forms for a long time. She's trying to use them up. Those of you that knew Bob, those of you that knew Bob Idrisaw, that's how long she's had these forms. She's still got 100 more to go. Anyways, so she needs it on that form. But just hang tight. Write, write it up, or just put your name-
Writing is difficult for me. Is there an accommodation?
Say it again?
Writing is hard for me. Is there an accommodation?
Sure. Bring it right up here, and we'll write for you. Okay. Somebody volunteer to write for you. That'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Menard. Yep? Ms. Menard will come over. The two of you can meet and write down, and I'll talk to this gentleman. Huh? He's running from you. It happens. Your husband's not here either. Okay. You're, you're next, sir. I'm getting there, Mr. Bowen.
Bob P., 111 Edgway Court. I urge everyone here tonight to support this article. I believe- I believe that we have a crisis in this town as far as employment. If you look, I was on the Conservation Commission for eight years. The turnover we had on the Conservation Commission has very badly served the public in this, in this town. We couldn't, we're way, they're still way behind on getting out their, their notices of approval. We've had four people in the, in the part-time position. This has a relatively minimal cost, which I didn't hear anyone mention tonight, the cost, but it's relatively minimal, and it's an act of good faith to our present employees to make, to tell them that we're listening. When the interim town manager came here, the Select Board charged him with going out and conducting listening sessions with the new employees. He did that. He listened. He came back. He came in with these two articles, Article 11 and Article 12. They, I'm sure they're flawed. I'm sure there's things in there that could be better, but they're a step in the right direction, and I urge you tonight to support those articles.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to say that I think that we should table these articles.
Well, I know his name, but.
John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. Forgive me. I'd like to take all these articles here that, with regard, this Warren article in particular, actually, regarding employee change until further public comment and move them to annual town meeting for a vote. This won't hurt our employees. It's six months, okay? Actually, five months, okay? Tax increases are going to be an issue regarding moving forward on these changes. And for Carter to come into this town and attempts to push through these items with the cokings and coaxing and the interference by Mr. Nizolo or Mr. Jeffries, and you, Ms. Moore, okay, whom all three of you, okay, are, you know, the ones who have been pushing this matter, okay? This could lead to an increase in our taxes next year, which you have not talked to anybody about. This could, and talk about a possible override next year, because the school is talking about needing more money next year that we don't have, okay? It's irresponsible. Mr. Carter, you should have only been here to keep the boat floating. Actually, I believe when you were hired, that was the purpose of you, and you had to be here for a short time and keep us afloat. With that, making drastic changes to employee matters should be outside your purview. Motenboro, Motenboro wants you. New Hampshire wants you. You should leave now.
Mr. Bowen.
To employee matters.
Mr. Bowen! Come on.
To employee matters.
Come on, a civil debate, Mr. Bowen.
I am. To employee matters, he will not be here to see them through. Mr. Lakkaditis mentioned that. These will not be led through. It may be poor taste, yes, but reality. You are all going to blindly vote here today, your tax money, okay? Think about it, okay? These items require more in-depth investigation of our future costs and more public comment. As again, we have no personnel committee at all. Our present political situation is going to cause additional problems. We have a new elected president. We have a governor who is willing to resist that. We need money from our, we need money from our state.
We are not going to do it this way.
And I say to you that because.
We are not going to shut people down. Mr. Bowen, please.
And I say because of that, okay? We're in up for a disaster of losing lots of federal money because of these situations. And what we need to do is, we need to engage in physical, I mean fiscal responsibility, keep the boat afloat, wait five months, look for a personnel committee, address the matter. Listen to what Mr. Lakkaditis said. He said, "A majority of the people that you're talking about are not, in this town, are not going to benefit." So how can this be a good plan? And if you want to boo me and shut me down, then you'll be booing Mr. Lakkaditis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen. We're done. Okay, please.
This was, there we go. Analog with 91 Main Street. You know, I'm going to second what Mr. P. spoke about it, that a lot of, the town has experienced a lot of turnover in our employees. He did mention the Conservation Commission, but we have other departments that have also suffered that. And in fact, we can't, when that happens, we can't get the service done that we expect to get done. And I'll mention, our Assessor's Office, office, that relies entirely on the work done in-house, has two part-time positions that'll benefit from this. Our Parks Department that puts summer program, runs town, the town beach, that will benefit from this. The Senior Center has four or five part-time employees that'll benefit from this. It's very, very hard to keep employees engaged, and here in town, when there's simply no benefit, we're, we're paying and offering as much, as, as good as McDonald's, if not worse. The, you know, I'll also mention that the Personnel Committee works as an advisor to town meeting. They come up with proposals. Anyone can come up with proposals. It's just an organized ways to do. Any person in town who collects 10 signatures for town meeting in the spring, or 100 for fall, can bring similar proposals to this. And all Mr. Carter did was gather a few common senses, common sense requirements, changes to our cell administration plan that will help these employees, these positions, so the town can stop bleeding employees. And also, I'll mention that in 2022, the paid holiday for part-time employees was something that Personnel Committee had studied and suggested for approval, but, you know, there was an amendment before we even got to the vote. So there is no reason why we shouldn't move to this. Mr. Carter does have a financial impact on this, on these proposals, and I think you mentioned during Finance Committee was not significant, because a lot of what is in here, including the paid holiday, we actually budget for it. And what ends up happening is, it just rolls over as free cash at the end of the year. So it's just another bucket of money that we know we're budgeting, but we're not going to use. So I urge everyone, for the benefit of us residents, in order to keep getting the services that we get, to please approve this, both Article 11 and 12. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call on this gentleman right up here, and then I'll talk to you, Mr. Brenner. Go right ahead, sir. And put the microphone back up.
There we go. My name is Logan O'Connell, 711 Page Street. So full disclosure, I am an employee of the town. I recently started with the town back in June, but I grew up here, so got that part of Lunenburg with me. To speak to some points earlier, I would say that improving retention and improving recruitment aren't necessarily mutually exclusive. And in a lot of ways, this article is keeping the boat afloat. This is stopping the bleeding. As Mr. P. has mentioned with the Conservation Commission example, there are a lot of boards, bodies, and groups that are comprised of volunteer members, people taking time out of their day, like you see up before you, to do this service. And in a lot of instances, they require on, support from those paid employees. They rely on that heavily. And when they can't even keep a face, you know, in the door for three months, six months, however long, that churn seriously, seriously is hard to recover from. The debt, the technical debt that you incur in accepting that level of turnover and just applying Band-Aid after Band-Aid is unsustainable. And I believe that this article is a very good way to put a, put a bandage on that, like a proper one.
Thank you. Mr. Brenner, I'm going to hear from you, then I'm going to hear from some of the people up on the Select Board up here. Go right ahead.
My name is Matthew Brenner. I live at 619 Northfield Road. I am going to be speaking from the perspective of the Planning Board Chair, but not on behalf of the Board in that capacity. It just gives me some life experience. I hear fiscal responsibility, and I agree 100%. Excuse me. I don't know if most of us understand what it's like to try to run government without full staff. It doesn't work. There are problems. Things get missed. Our town has legal obligations. Our town has things it must respond to in a timely manner. And if we don't, it can cost us dearly. We need to stop hemorrhaging staff, because with that hemorrhaging of staff comes a hemorrhaging of institutional knowledge. I'm going to, the Planning Office, we didn't have a land use director, we had an interim, but we didn't have a town-employed, full-time, land use director for roughly a year. And during that timeframe, we had three different land use office administrative assistants. I need us to understand, I have spent that entire time terrified for this town. I get up in front of you all, and I'm very happy, and I try to run meetings calmly, and I be friendly, but I want to be clear that the amount of time I had to sit there going, are we going to screw something up? Is the town going to be forced to acquiesce to some developer who does not have our best interests at heart because we miss a paperwork deadline? Are we going to not properly vet things we need to because we don't know the intricacies of how this town operates slightly different than others? Is this solution perfect? I would like to see more. I think we need more. Is it the right move right now? Absolutely. Would I be in favor of increasing this tonight with amendments? Absolutely. The town needs, if it's going to keep functioning and to protect the taxpayers, the residents, we need to be doing better by our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. From up here in the back. Trying to see what it's like when Mr. Bowen's in the back, if it's a better view. Okay, Mr. Alonso, Mr. Jeffries, your choice, and Ms. Moore, please. Well, we'll let Ms. Moore go first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Like many people know, but I was a town employee from 2011 until just recently. I took a new job in another municipality, in part because of a lot of these issues. While I wasn't an SAP member at the time, I truly believe across the board, our town needs to improve our pay, our packages, our benefits for all of our employees, including intermittent employees, which I do hope maybe we'll be bringing forward an amendment to correct that. I am fully in support of both of these articles. I think that we did charge Mr. Terenzini with coming in and trying to keep our boat afloat, and we're not going to do that while we continue to hemorrhage employees. A previous speaker spoke about evaluations. I agree that these need to be done, and as a member of, I was part of a bargaining team for a different unit, we were advocating for evaluations. But we should not be punishing our employees because the town has, has failed to do something that they're required to do. The employees can't self-evaluate. We shouldn't not give them these things to retain and recruit employees because the town has a failure. I do understand people's concerns about the speed of this, but I believe that it's imperative to make these changes as soon as we can. We're going to continue to hemorrhage employees and not be able to fill them, and as the previous speaker just said, this would be, could be catastrophic for our town. I think these changes are long overdue, and the SAP is a living document. Any changes that we make now can be changed at any other town meeting. This does not, is not, does not mean it can be a permanent change. So, you know, say we do something, and then someone wants to make an amendment, this can be changed again. Regarding finances, this, all the changes that are being proposed here have a nominal financial impact to the town, and, but could, could potentially offset some major issues that we could be facing. Thank you.
Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I fully support this article, and for a variety of reasons. You know, being on this board, and I've said this at several meetings, it has been overwhelmingly frustrating how the town is managed and how the town operates from the executive level down. I think that anyone who experienced the, the tax issue of a couple of years ago, you know, you leave that situation with one clear thought, which was, somebody clearly wasn't paying attention to what should have been going on, and who was that person that should have been paying attention? I think it also brings up triggers and questions of, you know, young people need jobs, but if you hire someone into a role that they have not previously served in, it is cheap money to supervise them to make sure that they do the job right. And we all saw what happened when the managerial focus wasn't on spending $8,000 to provide supervision over a new hire. It cost us a lot of heartache, a lot of time, and a lot of money over what was a managerial $5,000 mistake. You know, and so what I'm getting at is overwhelmingly, you know, being in this role now for five and a half years, a lot of our employees, it sucks. It sucks. I mean, you hear some of the comments that we heard tonight, those things get said to employees too. And so we have employees who are, who are suffering through a lot of abuse. We have employees who are doing their best. We have a member of this board who, who worked for the town, who grew up through the school system, graduated from Lunenburg High, and said, "This sucks, and I'm going to get on this board to make some changes, because it has to be better than this." Sitting here, you know, what we're asking you for tonight is, is one, a couple of things, but if you, you know, many, many people here have children. When you put your kids through school, imagine, imagine that the mother who gets a job in September and can't take a day off until March, you mean to tell me that that kid's not getting sick for six months? Not, so what this does is, this corrects that. When we think about creating a sick bank leave, what we're talking about are people who have cancer, people who get strokes, people who get in car accidents. And what we're saying is, allow fellow employees to donate sick time to them. This, to me, is about as non-controversial as it gets. And when we talk about some of our employees, and just to bring it home, you know, the person who maintains our website is a part-time employee. The person who, who coordinates all those student and kid activities over the summers that every parent depends on is a part-time employee. And when that person has to take the day off without pay, what this does is, it creates an environment in which people don't feel valued. Now, we know that the pay's only going up two to an half percent a year, because that's what our taxes do. People don't come into town government to get rich. But what we did was, we looked at our HR director, we looked at the interim town manager. Between the two of them, they have 60 years of experience. We went through all of our department heads. Between our department heads, we're talking over 100 years of experience. We met with over 40, 50 staff members to come up with what would make your life better. So to me, this is about as non-controversial as it gets. If we want to say, "Work six months, you don't get a sick day off," I don't believe we're that callous. If we want to say to our employees, "Sorry, but you can't donate sick time if you have a stroke, if you have a heart attack, if you get cancer," I don't believe we're that callous. And if we want to say to our employees, you know, as kind of the last note here, that we don't, we don't believe in merit awards, and we're talking $750 divided amongst our staff, that we don't believe in merit awards, we don't believe in, in any kind of recognition of the good things that people do, I don't believe we're that callous. We have been trying to operate at certain times with eight to 10% of our workforce absent because we're going to other communities with other benefits. So, to me, this is straightforward, this and the next article. But again, I will be surprised if we are this callous, and we're going to say no to our employees who we all depend on for what, in my opinion, is common sense solutions to things that we ourselves, in our own lives, we don't want this happening to us. We should not make it happen to somebody else. Thank you.
Mr. Alonso. All right, all right, all right. Just waste time.
So as the sole no vote on this, sorry. As the sole no vote on this, I felt compelled, regardless of how many people spoke, to explain why I voted against it. I will start out by saying, and anybody who knows my service in town for 18 years knows, I think, the highest of all of our employees, union or otherwise, in every different role and every different position in town. I also believe in a strong government process, and that is important. I believe one of my most important roles, and I said this from day one that I got elected, is to help this body make good decisions and prepare them to make good decisions. In order to make good decisions, good decisions come with time, they come with review, they come with oversight, they come with iterations, they come with input from multiple places on multiple timeframes to come up with what should be done best. Earlier tonight, I spoke about the Planning Board article that came to this board, to this body three times, with lots of revisions and lots of conversation. These two articles were introduced to the Board of Selectmen, I think, five weeks ago, after two listening sessions from someone who worked in town for three months. Not a lot of history, no personnel. Not a lot of history, no personnel committee, nobody else looking at it. On the Board of Selectmen, when we first started with our interim town manager, I asked for a report, because of people leaving, from our HR director, of the status of the employment, uh, environment, and the employment climate. The rest of the board supported me in that report. But that report is not before us, and it should have been before us, before these articles are before us. It's really a cart before the horse. Now, we can talk about the time to review, we can talk about the fact that the sick bank that one of my colleagues just spoke about, relegates to the Board of Selectmen, who has absolutely no training in this, and no background in, in HR, to come up with a sick bank policy, without the approval, without bringing it back to this town meeting. So, we're gonna approve a policy that five people are gonna see, and we can, three people can pass, and nobody in this room is going to see it again, and that's what happens when you rush documents, the words mean something. I don't even know, because I haven't had the time to dissect six pages of changes, of additions, of subtractions, of deletions. All of this may have ramifications beyond what we think. And all I want is somebody to look at them and tell me what they are. In the end, apart, aside from my colleague who thinks that the tax debacle would have been solved by these issues passing, which could not have been further from the truth, what, what should be happening, and what should be going through the minds of everybody here, and this is all that matters to me, if you're comfortable with this, it's your town, it's your town meeting, then vote for it. But if you came and you say, "I don't even know what's in here," don't be coerced into agreeing with it. I want to do what is best, what is right, and what is best, and what is fair for everybody, and in the only way, I believe, that happens, is if you involve everybody in the process, and this process has not involved everybody. In fact, it has involved so few people for these kind of changes, that it's kind of amazing that we, I even said that at a town, at the select board meeting, that I couldn't believe the speed that this was coming from. So, from the two hearing sessions, listening sessions, that the interim town manager had, till the time these came out, was like, three weeks, to make these kind of changes. Again, the decision is yours. If you feel that you're being rushed into it, I would urge you to wait, and let's get a personnel committee, let's bring this to annual town meeting. But if you're comfortable with it, then I think you can vote for it.
Thank you. Let me jump over you, uh, Ronde, the woman behind.
I just wanted to move the question.
Well, you can move the question later, okay? Mr. Lakhadis, I'll give you, you know, a very, 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 three very brief, brief comments.
I'll be quick. Well, Christos Lakhadis, 49 Maple Parkway. So, in response to one of the previous speakers, you know, the dialogue that's happened, the conversations that's happened between the employees and Mr. Terenzini, is the most I've seen between administration and employee in 18 months, uh, 18, excuse me, 18 years I've worked for this town. Okay, that's saying something, to the people that used to run this town. And while I have issues with a lot of, well, I shouldn't say a lot, a few things of this article, I agree it is a step in the right direction. However, I am gonna put an amendment forward, Mr. Moderator. I move that in Article 11, Section 70-19, Title Paid Holidays, Subsection B, we strike the word intermittent from the first sentence.
Okay, two things. Um, thank you, Mr. Lakhadis, bring it right up here. Okay, now, um, Mr. McLeod had, um, uh, offered an amendment that he wrote out. Unfortunately, Mr. McLeod's issue is on Article 12. We're currently issuing Article 11, so we're just gonna hold on to this for now. So, Mr. Lakhadis is asked that Article 11, Section 70-19, Paid Holidays, Subsection B, strike the word intermittent from the first sentence. Is that correct?
Correct, that will fix the exclusion that I mentioned earlier, previous comment.
Okay, so that's the amendment. I haven't heard a second. All right, I heard a very faint second. Okay, so this is second. Mr. Lakhadis, don't go too far. Okay, on the issue of the amendment, just tell me again what it says here. In Article 11, Section 70-19, Paid Holidays, Subsection B, strike the word intermittent from the first sentence. What does that happen, what occurs, because you strike that word?
So, as I mentioned earlier, the call firefighters, I mentioned that were excluded from receiving holiday pay under this proposed article, are classified as intermittent employees. It's my understanding that striking this would basically alleviate that exclusion, and now make them entitled to paid, uh, to holiday pay when they work.
So, this would give paid holidays to, paid, uh...
So, to, to anybody that's considered an intermittent employee in the town, and the call firefighters in this town.
Call fire, the call firefighters particularly, is your concern. Okay, that's the amendment that's before the body. On the amendment, anybody's questions, comments? Stay right there, Mr. Lakhadis. On, Mr. Alonso, on the amendment.
I would just have one question for the interim town manager or the finance director, is like, what is the impact, the financial impact of that change?
Mr. Terenzini, do you know? Can you give us an idea?
Frankly, off the cuff, I cannot, because this would extend the holiday benefit to all intermittent employees, which would mean anyone who works in the summertime for the parks department, it means, uh, all of the call firefighters, it means the seasonal plow operators. It would extend this very broadly, very dramatically, and I would not want to guess at that number without frankly being able to crunch it.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Murphy?
Somebody standing, whoa, 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 whoa. Oh, you're already standing?
I'm already standing.
Tell me what the point of order is.
Well, I'm not really sure it's a point of order, but, uh, his amendment is actually striking the word intermittent, it would leave the word seasonal. So, I do not believe it would include any of the parks seasonal employees, I think it's just interme, intermittent employees.
Okay. I'm not sure that's a point of order.
I don't know what it is, but that's...
I don't know what it is.
Whatever it might be.
It's a good clarification on his amendment.
Can I, uh, can I comment on that, Mr. Moderator?
You may.
So, you know, while the financial impact is unknown, I can tell you right now, that in terms of the fire department, it will be a savings, because as I mentioned, you know, these holiday shifts that go unfilled, that are supposed to be staffed by per diem, you're gonna pay, uh, a part-time employer, an intermittent employee, time and a half to work those days. You order a career person, it's under our collective bargaining agreement, we receive double time. I think that, uh, is a savings in itself, I mean, well, I can't speak for the other departments, that's just what the fire department's facing.
I think the, I think the HR director's whispering over here, maybe she's got an answer for this.
I'm not popping up on stage, that's...
Okay, but we'll hand the microphone down to you, that you have things to say that are important. Julie Bellavoe, Assistant Town Manager, HR Director.
Hi, is this on? Yes. Um, first of all, I just want to clarify that this is for regularly scheduled employees, it'd be very difficult, um, to have an intermittent, a call firefighter work, if you're paying all of them holiday pay not to work. So, I think that defeats what you're going after. Um, I understand it's not adding an incentive to them, but if we're gonna pay all of the call fire, all of reserve officers, all of our part-time staff, 19 hours and under, for days that they're not even scheduled to work, that does have a financial impact, 'cause now it's an additional day. Plus, you wouldn't use all of the call fire, all in one shift. So, now you're looking at, how many call firefighters do you have?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-something?
Thirty-five.
Yeah. So, everybody's gonna receive 12 hours?
Well, the way I understand that is, you know, it's regularly scheduled to work, they're not, majority aren't, there's three for each day, so to me, that would only apply to three people. You wouldn't have the other 32.
They would have to be regularly scheduled to work, 19 hours per week. It'd have to be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday. We can't shift it up. If you read to the bottom where it says the supervisor or the employee does not have the ability to alter the schedule, just to accommodate the holiday.
We're not altering a schedule, the schedule has been living with seven, seven years.
But it's not, 'cause it's, it's called. They don't know in advance.
Right, well, it's before the body, it's the body's...
Okay, thank you. The article, the amendment, excuse me, has been moved and seconded. Ms. Menard, on the amendment?
No.
No? Okay. I think we're ready to vote on the amendment. The amendment would be, so, excuse me? Whoa, I am sorry. You can ask a question, certainly.
Thank you. So, my question on the amendment is, can we get clarification on the definition of intermittent employee? I see it's been changed in the article. And what other intermittent employees do we have, besides the firefighters? Because right now, the, as I read it in the article, the definition intermittent employee shall mean any employee who works on an irregular or occasional basis without a pre-arranged schedule, and is compensated only for the time they work. That is a new definition.
It is.
So, I'm not sure if this addresses...
So, if a call firefighter who works on irregular basis is scheduled by the chief, for some reason, on a holiday, that person would receive their pay plus holiday pay. As I read this. They can't work and...
All right, Ms. Bellavoe, we need you to explain, not just chirp away down there in your chair. You're the one that can answer that question, what's the intermittent?
Well, no, I mean, that's not how I understood it, that they were not gonna work and get holiday pay, if they're an intermittent employee.
So, you have to... Quite frankly, this goes beyond anything we'd anticipated. The chief here?
Can, can I ask while we wait for the chief?
Another guy who likes to sit so far away to make a grand entrance.
What other intermittent employees do we have in town?
Just wait a second. What other intermittent employees do we have, Ms. Bellavoe?
Seasonal snowplow operators.
Snowplow operator.
But seasonal, as, as a previous speaker mentioned, was, was listed in addition, in the article.
But the title's intermittent, heavy equipment operator. And the SAP, that's the official title, intermittent, heavy equipment operator.
Okay, chief?
Patrick Sol, Patrick Sullivan, 197 Reservoir Road, also your fire chief. I think to put this very simply, what Mr. Lakhadis is saying is, on any given Sunday, we are not staffed with career personnel, but as our call people, working their hourly rate, providing three people a shift. What he is trying to do is to have holiday pay or time and a half for those people if that holiday happens to fall on a Sunday. No more, no less. They are not the same people that are scheduled every particular, say, every third Sunday. We have a bidding process that these people go through, so it may be different people at different times. But the fact is that we have Sundays, that are sometimes our holidays, that we're asking these call people to work at their hourly rate. And if they don't work, as he said, then we have to force in career people at much more money to keep that shift covered. We can go into a whole conversation about why that is, but that's how our current schedule is, and right now, that is a hole that they don't have. So, honestly, it's probably three people for a 24-hour period, maybe a couple times a, two, three, four times a year, that the holiday actually hits on a Sunday. 'Cause as like, their contract reads, they get paid holiday on the holiday, because they have to work no matter what, and that they don't get the holiday off. And that, and this is what, I think what, if, Christos, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're looking at is the three people that would be working on that shift when it falls on a holiday.
I think I'm losing track of this, control of this meeting. I think I heard you say correct. Good. Okay. We got the amendment. Mr. Bowen, on the amendment.
John Bowen, uh, John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I just wanna say, has everybody noticed the confusion going on? Thank you, Mr. Alonso, well spoken, and I think we should all listen to Mr. Alonso's intelligent approach to handling this. Wait until all the questions can be answered, until you have all the information. It's fully evaluated by that panel before you, and not just by three people and a town manager, an interim town manager at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Okay, on the amendment, which would be a majority vote, it reads, "In Article 11, Section 10, Section 19, Paid Holidays, Subsection B, strike the word intermittent from the first sentence." On the amendment, not the article, on the amendment.
Mr. Moderator?
Whoops.
I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Don't we also have to strike, or seasonal? Does it make sense?
Well, that's not what the amendment says. You can ask the moving party if he wants to accept an amendment that you wanna make, but you can't do it from back there underneath the exit sign. You weren't shy about coming down before there, Christos. Come on. So...
'Cause other, with, with striking just intermittent, it reads, "Accept those in a classification of, or seasonal." What's seasonal?
We beat this to death, my amendment is what it is, it's just gonna appear as a typo, let's just vote on it.
It is what it is. All those in favor of Article 11's amendment, just the amendment, voting is now open. Thanks for hanging in, folks. Been a long night. Some of you were in line forever.
I think it's 9:00.
I know, I said 9:00, but we started a half an hour late. Okay, I think voting is now closed. What is the vote on the amendment? Fifty in favor, 67 opposed, the amendment does not pass. Okay, we're back to voting on the article itself. Anybody else on the article? Ms. Menard.
Karen Menard, 672 Page Street. Mr. McLeod may be coming up for the same thing. Since I was the one who wrote the amendment for Mr. McLeod, I guess I just wanna get some clarification to avoid some confusion in the next article. What Mr. McLeod is proposing is actually in Article 11, and it's in Article 12, listed verbatim. So, I just wanna make sure that if we, I wrote, when I wrote it, we had corrected the article number to 12, and now I'm wondering, can we submit the same amendment for Article 11 and 12 using the same form?
Absolutely.
So, I don't have to rewrite? So, I'm gonna let him take over now, 'cause it's his article, it's his amendment, so...
I need, oh, Mr. McLeod, did I give it back to you? Where's the amendment?
Did you give it to us?
Mr. McLeod, do you want to summarize this? Do you wanna read it? This is for both Article 11 and Article 12. Sum and substances, the town manager may award a new employee an accrual vacation time in recognition of the employee qualifications and experience at market conditions, provided Provided that initial, hey, you're gonna have to read it. Karen, you're up, Ms. Menard. Sorry. Add a mic.
I don't want to do that. We won't read the whole thing.
I guess. Yep.
This is Article 11 and Article 12, letter G. To be amended to, the town manager may award a new employee an accrual of vacation leave in recognition of the employee's qualifications and experience at market conditions, provided that such initial accrual shall not exceed five weeks. Such employee shall be awarded a service date for the purpose of vacation leave accrual only, which shall be used for future increases in the accrual rate.
Okay. And capable staff, part-time employees back here, were able to add that in on the screen. On the amendment... Okay, we're ready to vote. On the, pardon? Yeah, you've already got it. On the amendment, yea or nay, voting is now open. Okay, we're not ticking up any longer. Voting is now closed. Does the amendment pass or fail? So it does not pass. It did not pass. Okay, now Article 11, in its entirety, is before you. Go right, all right, somebody defer to somebody, please.
Glenn McLeod, 436 Reservoir Road. Okay, so those are my, I had two major questions. One was vacation, sorry for jumping ahead, but it was in the presentation, and I got a little excited. So the other main question I had was relative to the pay. So again, if I, or we'll use my wife as an example, she is an active employee with about 17 years municipal experience. We recently, a year and a half or so ago, moved to Lunenburg. She works in a town down 495. If she were to look to come up here and work, would you match, if she's at top step, there's eight steps in her town as well as in Lunenburg. So we now realize if she were to move from her town to here, she would have to lose vacation time. Would she also have to lose pay?
Without knowing how much pay she was earning in her current job and what our grade and step was for this, I don't know. I mean, not necessarily. This gives us the ability to offer a pay above step one in a shorter timeframe.
Okay, so it's the same pay scale, she's at eight, so you can go to eight in part of your recruitment in attraction?
I can go to four after consulting with the chair of the Personnel Committee. I would again encourage folks to volunteer for that. And with a vote of the Personnel Committee, yes, we could go all the way.
I would like the town to have, I would like the town manager, whether interim or full-time town manager, who we're, I assume we're going to end up paying over $200,000. I would like that CEO of our town to have the ability, if he's or she sees fit, to match, again, I'm not, you know, at a minimum, matching, trying to lure somebody to this town, a qualified employee. I think to have this program trying to attract and keep employees, I think, again, I really do commend the board as well as interim town manager. I'm very grateful, as the previous speaker from the Fire Department spoke, I am very grateful for the effort that you're taking. And Mr. Alonso is not wrong. He raises some valid points. I would not go toe-to-toe, but this, these are very modest improvements. And again, I commend you for identifying how serious this problem is and to address these low-dollar, high-morale issues. And I'll close out by saying, we should hire more firemen, firefighters, and we should treat them better.
So is this an amendment?
Well, I mean, if it's not going to pass anyway, I have another amendment in that same format, in that same format, all typed out and signed, ready to go.
Listen, you're free to make as many amendments as you want, I guess. Is this an amendment? So what is, what is this amendment?
That's the vacation one.
Huh?
That's the, that's the vacation one that failed.
This is the vacation one that failed? Okay, what's next?
So this, I move the word, okay, proposed motion to amend Article 12, paragraph G. I move the word 11, sorry.
Have you thought about joining the Personnel Committee?
Yeah. Well, I think the, I think the town manager should have more authority over the whole, I'm sorry, I don't know if I left my paperwork out on the table when we went to...
Why don't you speak on the article? There's no amendment before you at this time. We're just talking on the article.
Thank you. My name's Milery Keeling. I live at 324 Sunny Hill Road. I had some experience volunteering on a committee, the school committee, which did contract negotiations. I understand how hard it is to put in all the time and effort and not get as far as you want to go every single time. It's really, it's really difficult, and it sounds to me like the major problem we're confronting, these people who have given so much time, who give, I mean, I appreciate you guys so much, I really do. All of your points, excellent, every single one of them. But it seems like the real emergency that we have here is that we don't have a Personnel Committee, and that every single person who's still sitting in this room has an obligation to examine your heart and see, could I do that job for my town? And if I can't, do I know someone that I could speak to about it? Because we can have a lot of feelings about it, but they've got a lot to do. The town manager has a lot to do. There aren't enough people doing the jobs that we have to do. We seem like we're in the middle of a crisis. In the middle of a crisis, this seems to me like a reasonable step forward. It doesn't seem like the final step. We need a Personnel Committee to come back to major town meeting in the spring with additions and corrections, but somebody has to get to it and do the work. Right now, I think we should stop tripping over quarters to pick up nickels, and we should start paying people and rewarding them. It might have come better if it will help us retain employees so that we can get the services done that we need. And I would just want to say one more thing. I appreciate our firefighters and our public service more than, I'm old, I really appreciate you. I haven't had any crises, but I really appreciate you, and I know how much it takes out of your families to do it. I have friends who are firefighters. As a town, it's hard to face change. It's hard to face that things cost more. It's really hard. We have to dig deeper, but that's always going to be true. Death and taxes are reliable outcomes. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Okay, did you find your paper?
I did.
Okay. What is this? Read to me what it says.
I would move the following words and punctuation be deleted from paragraph A, and these would simply allow the town manager to work within the full range of the Salary Administration Plan, not be limited to step four. In the first sentence, following the word manager, delete comma after consultation with the chair of the Personnel Committee, comma. Then delete the second and third sentences in their entirety. Delete, the Personnel Committee must formally vote to approve any proposal by the town manager to pay the new employee above step four. The town manager may not use the provisions of Section 7-2, Paragraph G, to hire a new employee above step four. So again, that would just allow... That would allow the interim town manager or the new town manager to, more flexibility within our current Salary Administration Plan. Maybe the employee that's applying is a level eight, and the town manager feels as though they're a level four. He can offer them a level four. Nothing mandates he match. It gives he or she the ability, the flexibility, to do the job that we hired them for and pay them a very reasonable pay rate. And I would also like to add, and this does touch upon the vacation time as well as the pay, I dare the town to use the current standards as they go to apply or try to attract a new town manager. Tell the new town manager that they need to have two weeks' vacation, and they can only, you know, we don't have much flexibility on what we can pay them. Just see how well that works. I think there's two tiers here. We treat the executives one way and the worker bees another way, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. So this is a good teachable moment. So anybody who wants to make amendments, who has issues about things that are coming up at the special or the annual town meeting, bring your things to us in advance so that we can review them, so that we can vet them, so we can have Town Council review them, and we can hasten the process, get it going a lot faster. The other thing, even if you could go to the Select Board and submit some of these things during public comment prior to the special town meeting, and then we would have started a conversation, and we would be more ready to deal with things. So we want to hear from you. We want to hear your amendments. We want you to be involved, so...
That's excellent advice. I do, I do appreciate it. I wasn't up to speed with it. I did unfortunately watch the meeting, the Select Board meeting, I wasn't able to go. I did go before the poor Finance Committee and let them have it, but it's a good point.
Tell that to everybody, though. You know, it'll help the process. Go ahead.
I just wanted to move the question for the second time. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Lizio. I kind of shut you off before, and that was inappropriate of me, and I apologize to you. Okay, so first we have to, are you moving the question or moving the amendment, Ms. Lizio? Ms. Lizio, hi. We're on the amendment, Ms. Lizio, okay? And then we'll move the question as soon as we answer the question.
I'm not sure I heard a second. Neil Sullivan, 39 Cliffview Terrace. I'm not sure I heard it a second of that amendment. Okay, all right.
You asked for it. Okay, on the amendment, okay, got people that need to talk about it, and then we're going to move the question as soon as we deal with the amendment. Go.
First, I want to say that the amender didn't mention, there's lots of paragraph As. Just for clarity, we're talking about Section 70-12, New Personnel, Paragraph A, because there's like five paragraph As in this article. So that's what he's looking to amend. My comment about it is that we have now spent five times as much time talking about this article than all the other meetings before town meeting, including Finance Committee and Select Board combined, who talked about it maybe a half an hour to 40 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Alkey.
So I just want to raise this because I think this isn't consistent with the intent of the amendment. The previous speaker, the amendment said to strike the sentence that the town manager may not use the provisions of Section 70-2, Paragraph G, to hire a new employee above step four. Well, that Section 72, Paragraph G actually says, in the event that the Personnel Committee does not have enough members to conduct business, the town manager shall have the authority to administer the SAP. I don't think, where did he go?
Mr. McLeod?
He's up there.
Oh, there. God. I don't think that was your intent, and I want to point that out in case it wasn't Does that make sense?
Well, naturally, I gave you all of my copies. I simply want the town manager to have the authority to work within the SAP. And I think that, in the proposed article, I think was stricken already.
I think by removing that final sentence, the town manager may not use the provisions of Section 70-2, Paragraph G, negates the ability of the town manager to administer SAP in the absence of a Personnel Committee, which I don't think is what you want.
I don't think it would prohibit the town manager from...
I don't, maybe, maybe Town Council can chime in?
No.
If the town manager wanted to hire someone at step five?
Go right ahead. That's why I walked over here.
So for the record again, Adam Costa, Town Council. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. I don't want to speak to what the amender is intending or what the Selectwoman is commenting on. I'm just going to speak very generally about how I understand the amendment. So at present, Section 70-2, Paragraph G, says, in the event that the Personnel Committee does not have enough members to conduct business, the town manager shall have the authority to administer the Salary Administration Plan. And the proposed adjustment to Section 70-12, which the amender is proposing to now strike, would say that the town manager may not use that provision I just read, Section 70-2, Paragraph G, to hire a new employee above step four. So by striking that restriction, I think it is giving, the term I just used in speaking with Selectman was carte blanche, giving full authority to the town manager to administer the SAP, and that would be any step.
That is correct, and that was driven by the interim town manager's comment of trying to be expeditious in bringing somebody on board. If you have a viable candidate that he wants to offer, say, you know, a step five or step six, he would have to wait for, you know, is the, you know, is the Personnel Board on vacation or the chairman? I just, I fall on the side that if we're hiring someone over $200,000, that, you know, they're ultimately responsible for the individuals that they put beneath them, and I have full confidence that even the interim town manager would hire qualified people and would not need to burden the process, to slow the process with the fear of losing that candidate to another town with a bureaucracy. You know, I think the Personnel Board is an excellent sounding board and yet another committee, but I don't think it's critical.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a vote on the amendment. It's before you. It is actually, if you can read it in the small print, without all the deletes of commas and stuff. All employees shall be hired at the minimum of the rate range of the job for which the new employee is hired unless the town manager authorizes paying the employee at a higher step due to the employee's qualifications and experience or marketing conditions. If you're in favor of that amendment, please vote now, yes or no. Okay, it's an odd number. Okay, voting is now closed. Are you in favor of the amendment or not? Not in favor of the amendment, the amendment fails. Now, Ms. Lizio had moved for, cut off debate, moved the question. I think we're just ready to vote, rather than vote on that amendment, on that motion, rather than let's just vote. So on Article 11, majority vote on the entire article now, not amended in any way. Okay, stopped clicking up. Voting is now closed. Are you in favor of the amendment or not? You are in favor, excuse me, of the article, in favor of the article. So the article passes, 82 to 37, simple majority. Article 11 has passed. Moving on to Article 12. If you thought Article 11 was fine, here comes Article 12. Mr. Jeffries?
I move to amend the Code of Lunenburg Chapters 70 entitled Salary Administration Plan by making certain deletions and strike-through and additions in bold italic as printed in the special town meeting warrant booklet with said amendments to be effective January 1, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Select Board, your recommendation?
Select Board, recommend...
Select Board recommends approval 4 to 1.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval 4 to 1.
Thank you. Anyone have questions, comments? 10 hours' worth of board discussion on Article 12. Any amendments on Article 12? Great. We're ready to vote on Article 12. What?
What about this one?
What about that one?
Well, you gave me it for 11 and 12.
We voted on it. Was defeated. All the amendments on the last article were defeated, and nobody stood to make an amendment on Article 12. I just asked if there were any amendments for Article 12. Nothing were made. So we're ready to vote on Article 12. Voting is now open. All those in favor say yes or no. I must remind you not to vote early. I had five people tried to vote early. You're running the risk of it not going through. Now, I see we had 10 to 15 people leave. Okay, voting is now closed. Article 12. What's the majority say? Yes. 21 say no. Article 12 passes. Article 13, Ms. Moore.
I move to allow the Chair of the Budget Task Force and the Chair of the Lunenburg Municipal Design Committee to make a verbal report on the status of the work of their respective groups.
Is there a second?
Second.
Select Board.
Select Board recommends approval.
Finance.
No financial impact.
No financial impact. All right, I guess I'm going to have some presentations. Go right ahead. Introduce yourself, where you live, and what your role is, and what article, which presentation you're making. Okay, hold on. Somebody said a point of order. I said earlier, stand when you do a point of order. Don't just tell me what it is. Stand, say point of order, and then tell me what your point of order is. Yes?
We need to vote the article before the report.
Have to vote the article before the reports. You know, that's a good point, Ms. Moore. Thank you. At 10 o'clock at night, I appreciate your help. All right. All those in favor of the article to hear the reports, please vote by saying yes or no. Voting is now open. Good point of order, Ms. Melry Keeling. Melry Keeling told me I was out of order. She told me I was out of order. Can you stand it? God. Okay.
Carter. Three minutes. Two to three minutes.
I know. Get a little punchy at this time of night. A lot of people don't care to vote. Okay, we don't have any more clicking. All those in favor of hearing the reports, signal by saying aye. 49 said, "Let's hear this report." 28 said, "No." So we'll hear them. Go right ahead. Tell us who you're reporting on.
So I'm the Chair of the Budget Task Force, Anthony Scullenbrady, 92 Beale Street, and we'd like to give the town a quick update on some of the work that we've done. Our hope is to provide actionable proposals to the appropriate entities within town government before the end of the year. We have a number of revenue boosting and expense reducing proposals, and some of them will likely help more than others. So the things that we have looked at in terms of revenue increases include the warrant item that you've all voted for, which was the adoption of the prudent investor rule. We also are looking at consolidating investment accounts. When we were doing this, we found investment accounts spread all over the place in various accounts with various amounts of money, some earning no interest at all. We're also looking at increasing school fees, but we are doing so tying it to the free lunch status. So it would be a sliding scale based on free lunch status. We are consolidating and reviewing proposals for solar panel fund generation, and this includes installing solar panels, potentially installing solar panels in the parking lots. If you've been to Fitchburg, they've done some of this. The other items that we are looking at are pursuing green grants for the Phase 2 of the air conditioners at the Lunenburg Primary School as well as Phase 3, and then doing so again when they are installed at the Turkey Hill Elementary School. We are also looking at increasing Chapter 90 funds by increasing the number of roads designated as town roads. We are reviewing the viability of a split tax rate, and we are reviewing the viability of community... What's the term, Carter?
Community preservation.
Oh, the Community Preservation Act funds. Some of the expense reduction items that we looked at were reducing the duplicative work on purchase orders between the school and town, consolidating school and town snow removal and ground maintenance, updating warrant delivery to electronic methods with a request for paper necessary. We are also looking at proposals to offer a high deductibility healthcare plan for health insurance for town employees. We are also looking at reviewing the town trash disposal fees and costs. And two final things, reviewing the health insurance buyout amounts as well as reviewing rules for opt-out incentives for health insurance. In addition to doing all of this, one of the things that the Budget Task Force has a strong consensus about is asking for a full diagnostic audit of the town's finances. One of the things that became clear in looking at all of the money, where all the money is, and how the money is being used and how it's coming into town, is that there is a lot of information we are missing. It's not that the money is missing, we just don't know where it's coming from. If you've watched any of the Budget Task Force meetings, there is the stuff fund, the miscellaneous non-renewing account. No one has any idea where it is coming from or why it ended. We hope that some of these proposals will be sufficient to help the town. We also are looking at a need for input from everybody in the community. We've talked to people from the school unions, from the firefighters, from the police officers. We've talked to the Board of Assessors. We've basically done the grand tour of Lunenburg Municipal Government, but the one thing that we're missing is input from people like you. Mr. Passios and Anna Lockwood are the only people from the public that have attended any meetings. Anybody has any ideas? We need them. We're trying to figure out ways to save you money, and hopefully somebody has some ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mike Ray Jeffries and Chair of the Municipal Building Design Committee. This should be a pretty quick update. So as we may recall, in previous history here, Select Board, through the rules that we have in our bylaws and charter, we created a municipal building design committee. Initially, we were looking at the TC Passios this iteration, and we expanded that scope to include all municipal buildings. So we've just resumed meeting. As of a couple of months ago, we had a long, lengthy pause due to getting to a stopping point and not being able to proceed. But here are the key things I want you guys all to know. So what we're trying to solve is we're trying to solve our building issue. Something I have said numerous times is the town doesn't have a problem with what to do with old buildings, or we have a problem with what to do with old schools. And so I know that the school committee going forward has a better focus on identifying building disposition before they build a new school. But what we've been working on is really how do we maximize the usage of our existing buildings? So the vision that we've come up with in consultation with the community, and this was a series of meetings that we had with various stakeholders, key department heads. We worked with an architectural firm previously, and what we identified was a vision that says, you know, Town Hall will continue to be used as a meeting space. It goes back to those original New England roots of a meeting house, whereas the second floor will continue to be used as it is now, and the first floor will become three meeting rooms. We look at the Ritter Building, and that has been identified for school offices in which there's also the need for what's called the ACE program, which are adults who are 18 through 22 who need additional skills after they graduate high school. It's usually a small program of four to six, four to eight students, and it's teaching them life skills like, you know, how you do your laundry, how you make simple meals. And it is a funded program, but that program needs to be co-located with the schools, with the school offices. And then we're looking at, we identified it as an annex, but it's the new Town Hall. And the new Town Hall is really going to be administrative offices right on the same parcel as the Ritter Building. So why did we approach this issue, and what are we trying to do? Right now, for businesses, when you come into town, it is very hard and confusing to know where to go. If you're a resident, most residents who come into Town Hall, you know, you walk into Town Hall, you realize you've got to go across the street to the Ritter Building to get a lot of things done. And so really, the idea is to consolidate multiple uses, also to maximize, again, usability for the residents. We're trying to do this in the most cost-effective way possible. We know that building will always cost more in the future than it costs today, and so our mindset is keeping this total building cost below 15 million. That's the target. Now, when we did this for TC Passios, as you may recall, with the code upgrades alone, we were at 11, 12 million, and that total price tag for that building was almost $30 million to rehabilitate the TC Passios, and it didn't address the Ritter Building, the Town Hall. So what this plan does is it incorporates all of those. I do invite everyone to attend Municipal Building Design Committee meetings. They're held on the first and third Mondays at 5:30. These meetings are fully remote, but they're the only meeting in town in which any member of the public can participate at any time. And so I do encourage you to come. Our goal is, we just received, we're in the hiring process now of getting an architect to develop these renderings for us to then get cost estimations on them, so that way we can come to the town with a borrowing request in this coming spring. So that's the update that I have. Again, we're trying to solve our building issue and really resolve this, and I think that the solution that the Municipal Building Design has been working on critically preserves our buildings, which is something that's important for us to do. It continues their usage for years to come, and it's the most cost-effective way that we can identify this. Every space, we've looked at multiple uses. We've really challenged every request that we've received for space. This plan calls for a digitization of records to help minimize how much square footage is being spent storing files, and again, make sure that every room has a multiple, multi-use to it, so that way rooms that are used during the day can be used by the community, and rooms at night can also be used by the community. That's the update.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Thank you to both of the committees for their reports. Okay, I'm going to make a promise to you. I'm going to be quick now. Article 14.
I move to appropriate a sum of money to pay all remaining costs of the design and construction of the Marshall Park renovation project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, to approve the submission of a grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program, PL 88-578, in furtherance of this project, and to reaffirm that the Marshall Park land is dedicated to park purposes under Chapter 45, Section 3.
And that was wonderful, Mr. Alonzo. We greatly appreciate it, but I think that somebody wants to move to pass over. I know.
Yep.
I should have stopped you sooner.
I'm just reading.
Mr. Moderator?
You are who?
Anita Shiper, Chair of the Parks Commission, 63 Chestnut Street. I move to pass over Article 14.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. So why do you want to pass over?
I'll be brief, I promise. As you know, the town has been looking to try to make improvements to Marshall Park for several years. We have been moving ahead with a design firm that helped us develop a schematic plan for Marshall Park. With that information and with the cost estimates they provided, we had hoped that we would use the funds already allocated by previous town meeting votes and using the ARPA funds that the Board of Selectmen allocated to the project to actually begin the first phase of Marshall Park improvements this year, meaning that we would go out to bid this winter and actually begin construction of the first phase next year. Unfortunately, with the hiring of the new landscape design firm, their cost estimating company came in with a cost estimate much higher than the estimates we had previously been given. And as such, we found that we do not have enough money in hand right now to go ahead with the construction of the first phase, nor would we be able to make do with the $5.2 million that we were hoping to ask you for tonight. So the Parks Commission made a difficult decision, I feel a prudent decision, to put a pause on this at this time. And what we'd like to do is keep moving ahead with the design, but working it in such a way that there is more phasing to it, so that we can bring back a proposal to the town at the next spring town meeting that would provide flexibility and more options for phasing this in, in a way that the town feels that they may be able to afford. So we're asking you to pass over this article at this time.
All right. Anybody want to question why we're passing it over? Anything about the article? Kathy says, "How about we vote?" All those in favor of passing over the article, please. What can I tell you? Sorry. A little more communication up here would have been nicer. My fault.
My fault.
Yeah, we're ready to vote, just to pass over. It's a majority vote.
Yep.
Go ahead, take a moment. It's not on right, just give us a minute. Majority vote to pass over Article 14. There you go. All those in favor of passing over, signal by saying aye or no. Excellent. Still 80 people awake. Thank you so much. Voting is now closed. Who wants to pass it over? 75. Four people wanted to keep going. I love it. Some people, I love it. Okay, on to Article 15. I thought Anna was going to move Article 15 to pass over. Was I mistaken again?
Good evening. Yes, there was a sit-in petition by me, and I moved that we pass over Article 15.
Okay, is there a second for passing over Article 15? Okay. Is there any... Tell us why we're passing it over, Ms. Lockwood.
As previously stated by the Chair of the Parks Commission.
Okay, for all the same reasons. Got it. Okay. Simple majority. All those in favor of passing over, please vote yes. Simple majority, Article 15. Mr. Passios, you're leaving. Please come back sometime. I would miss you. Okay, voting is now closed. All in favor of passing over, say yes. What's the voting? 64. One person still wants to talk about it. Okay. Meeting is closed. We've finished our warrant. I thank you all for your patience. We will do better getting you in the room next time. Come early, and please stay late. Vote twice if you can.